All right. Good morning and welcome to the November twenty-second Public Hearing and Public Meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. We'll begin the morning by taking attendance and I'll turn it over to our General Counsel, Mark Silverman, to call the role.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Vice Chair Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin. Mr. Chapin. Commissioner Chen. Commissioner Deventure. Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Jefferson, you're on mute.
Yeah, thank you. Here.
Commissioner Lutti. Commissioner Holford Smith.
All right, and again, welcome to the November twenty-second Public Hearing and Public Meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. And this meeting is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel. So if you would like to testify on any hearing items today, you may do so by joining the Zoom meeting at the estimated time for that item, which is shown on our web, our agenda, which can be found on our website. You can also follow along on YouTube to see where we are in terms of the schedule. And if you would just like to watch the proceedings, you may do so by going to the YouTube channel. And this morning, we are going to start with a public meeting item from the Research Department, a proposal for a designation, which we will vote on. And then we will move to public meeting items for applications for work on designated properties, most of which are applications that have already had a hearing and are back today with revisions in response to our comments. One item for the Middle Collegiate Church on the Lower East Side, our East Village slash Lower East Side, is, was read into the record last week. We did not present it, so we will be opening the hearing today and taking testimony on that item. And then we will move to a public hearing agenda for new applications for work on designated properties. So with that, I will turn it over to Caitlin Musnickail, our Director of Research, to take us through the Research Department item.
Thanks, Sarah. Good morning, everyone. Item number one on the Research Department agenda is LP two-six-six-two, The Lesbian Hurstery Archives at four-eighty-four Fourteenth Street in Brooklyn, Block eleven-oh-three, Lot thirty-one. Item proposed for designation is a Renaissance Revival rowhouse designed by Axel Hedman and constructed in nineteen oh-eight that has housed the Lesbian Hurstery Archives since nineteen ninety-one. And presenting this morning is Margaret Herman. Thank you.
Good morning. Four-eighty-four Fourteenth Street in Park Slope, Brooklyn, is culturally significant as the home since nineteen ninety-one of the Lesbian Hurstery Archives, the nation's oldest and largest collection of lesbian-related historical material. The organization's headquarters for over thirty years, this Renaissance Revival-style building is where the Archives expanded its collection, grew to national prominence, and continues to serve as a vital educational organization, community space, and center for lesbian history and culture. On October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, the Landmarks Preservation Commission held a public hearing on the proposed designation of the Lesbian Hurstery Archives as an individual New York City landmark. Six people testified in support of the proposed designation, including representatives of the Lesbian Hurstery Archives, the Historic Districts Council, and the NYC LGBT Historic Sites Project, and two individuals. No one spoke in opposition. The Commission also received thirty-four letters in support of designation, including from representatives of the Lesbian Hurstery Archives, the New York Historical Society, the Leslie Loman Museum of Art, the Alice Austin House, NYC Dyke March, and twenty-four individuals. The building is on Fourteenth Street between Eighth Avenue and Prospect Park West within Brooklyn's Park Slope Historic District. The proposed landmark site consists of the tax lot, Block eleven-oh-three, Lot thirty-one. The Lesbian Hurstery Archives is an entirely volunteer-run nonprofit organization founded in nineteen seventy-four by activists Joan Nessel, Deborah Ettl, and others, housed until nineteen ninety-one in Nessel and Ettl's apartment on the Upper West Side of Manhattan. The Archives began as a grassroots attempt to end the silence around lesbian history and to create a physical archive for study, analysis, and community gathering. At a time when the LGBTQ community faced widespread legal and social discrimination, the Archives fought to bring lesbian cultural artifacts into public view and to normalize them as an integral piece of American history. The project was national in scope from its early years and was intentionally feminist in nature, using the term "hurstery" to note the rejection of patriarchy. It was also inclusive, with women of color counted among the organization's early supporters and contributors. The image on the left shows early members participating in the Second Annual Gay Academic Union Conference at NYU in nineteen seventy-four. The images on the right show volunteers sorting through periodicals and attending a gathering at the Archives Upper West Side home. The collection had outgrown its space in the late nineteen eighties, and by nineteen ninety-one, the Archives had raised enough funds to purchase four-eighty-four Fourteenth Street in a residential neighborhood in Park Slope, Brooklyn, which had become a center of the lesbian community in New York City. After more than a year of renovations, the building was transformed into a new headquarters for the Archives. In nineteen ninety-six, the Archives paid off their mortgage, an achievement that held enormous significance for the organization. The Archives now had a permanent home that could serve as a direct response to the pervasive homophobia, sexism, and lack of lesbian space the community had experienced throughout history. The Archives were conceived as a living repository and has grown to include a wide variety of materials dating from the nineteen fifties to the present with a national scope, collected and donated by lesbians themselves. Materials in the Archives include periodicals, files on lesbian activists and community groups, audiovisual materials, oral histories, and the personal and professional papers of lesbians from a diversity of cultural, ethnic, and class-based communities. Among many others, significant collections include those of the organization's Daughters of Bolidis, the Salsa Sol Sisters, and the New York Chapter of ACT UP, as well as the papers of Archives co-founder Joan Nessel, nineteen-sixties organizer Barbara Giddings, and African-American activists Maple Hampton and Audrey Lord. Since nineteen ninety-one, the Archives has continued to expand their collection with new materials added pertaining to more recent lesbian individuals and activist groups and to issues like lesbian parenthood, political organizing in the nineteen nineties, and the marriage equality cases of the twenty-first century. Over the last two decades, the Archives has greatly increased public access by digitizing a significant portion of their collections, including photographs, audiovisual materials, and Archives newsletters. Shown here are images of a digitized newsletter from two thousand and one and online exhibits of digitized video and audio files from the Daughters of Bolidis and ACT UP. Over the last thirty years, the Archives has broadened their national and international reputation, inspiring the creation of similar archival collections in other communities and holding numerous volunteer-led events and traveling exhibitions across the United States and at their home in Park Slope. The images here highlight a small sampling of these events, including a talk given in Illinois in nineteen ninety-three, a gallery exhibition of lesbian pulp paperback covers in Hawaii in nineteen ninety-nine, and a marathon reading of work by Audrey Lord and Adrian Rich held at the Archives in twenty-twelve. The Archives has also contributed extensively to important LGBTQ exhibitions at larger institutions, such as the New York Public Library in nineteen ninety-four and the New York Historical Society in twenty-nineteen. In recent years, the Archives has been noted by scholars for its unique position as a non-institutional, community-based archival collection funded solely by private and non-governmental sources, realizing goals set by its founders almost fifty years ago. The Archives' home at four-eighty-four Fourteenth Street is located just west of Prospect Park within the Park Slope Historic District, designated in nineteen seventy-three. The Historic District is a residential neighborhood consisting of intact late nineteenth and early twentieth-century streetscapes featuring rowhouses of a mostly uniform height designed in a variety of styles. Four-eighty-four Fourteenth Street was originally a two-family home designed by Axel Hedman for the Prospect Park West Realty Company in nineteen oh-eight. It was designed in the Renaissance Revival style as part of a row of seven similar limestone-fronted rowhouses with alternating curved and angled dais. The building contributes to the character of the Historic District, but because the Historic District designation predated the Archives' arrival in nineteen ninety-one, there is no mention of the building's LGBTQ significance. Designating four-eighty-four Fourteenth Street as an individual landmark would highlight this important history and emphasize preservation of the building to its period of association with the Lesbian Hurstery Archives. Since purchasing four-eighty-four Fourteenth Street in nineteen ninety-one, the Archives has used their building in Park Slope for archival storage and display, offices, and community space, with a caretaker's apartment on the top floor. The organization has diligently maintained the building, and it retains a high degree of integrity and historic character within the surrounding streetscape. In the early nineteen nineties, the Archives worked with LPC to implement limited alterations related to accessibility and security necessary for the building's new use as a nonprofit and repository of archival materials. As a nationally important collection of LGBTQ historical materials, the Lesbian Hurstery Archives plays an essential role in telling the story of a mostly unseen community of women who contributed to America's cultural, political, and social history. Four-eighty-four Fourteenth Street has been the organization's home for over thirty years, where it has continued to collect important materials and serve researchers and the public. The Research Department recommends the Commission vote to designate the Lesbian Hurstery Archives as an individual landmark. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Margaret or Kate at this point? Or any thoughts? Anyone have any thoughts? Yes, Commissioner Shamir Baron, please go ahead.
I'm sorry if I missed this, but i-is the row itself designated as a district?
Yes.
It is. Okay. And so what does that mean, in this case, the kind of the layer of individual landmark? Does it mean anything when the two exist? I mean, there are other situations where there are individual landmarks in districts, but I just wondered if there's any implication.
Right. There are situations where individual landmarks are in historic districts, and they have a different appearance from the historic or original appearance, but that appearance dates to its cultural or historic significance for which its individual designation was in, designated, for which it was designated. And in those cases, there is a sort of a regulatory impact. Here, there is less so. It's more subtle because it still does retain its historic appearance in relates to the rest of the row. But as you can see, we certainly have allowed for changes to recognize the building as publicly accessible, such as the barrier-free access ramp. So the idea of identity and marking the identity is something that I think the Commission would think about maybe perhaps differently here than for a private home in the rest of the row.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it just generally, it's, you know, because it is one of a continuous row, this important layer of history is not identified in any way, and so this designation would reflect that important layer of history. But have a more subtle regulatory impact. Okay, Commissioner Goldblum.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I kind of on that same topic. Is the staff aware of any modifications to the building that would be specifically preserved on this building because of the proposed designation? In other words, you have, you were just talking about, Sarah, about the lift. You know, are there other modifications that would be covered by this application that are kind of off-topic from the more broad, broad district protections?
I don't think there are really architectural changes, unlike, like, for example, the James Baldwin House, which had the nineteen fifties white brick facade.
Right. That's, that's the one I was thinking of.
So, but, but there are not architectural changes here that necessarily reflect the particular, this history, this layer of the history.
And we know, I know this is not our zone, but is there going to be a plaque? Because, I mean, I can imagine that, you know, if the Lesbian Hurstery Archive, you know, takes off in popularity and gains lots of followers across the world, that they might want to go build their, build themselves a new building in some other neighborhood. And this would then be probably sold as a, as a residence. So, you know, how do we hold on to this particular designation?
Right. Well, you know, we do have a plaque program, and we have been talking to them and hope that they will work with us and install a plaque, because I think it would be a great way to identify this history. But of course, a plaque is something that has to be, the owner has to want the plaque, and so actually, even if the building were sold and the owner wanted to remove the plaque, we couldn't compel them to keep it. And I think that's actually why the designation is so important, because while there may not be a physical memory later on, there is a sort of scholarly memory and a status that puts it with our other very select fourteen hundred other individual landmarks within the city.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Or other comments? Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm really thrilled that we are voting on this building today. The Lesbian Hurstery Archives is a nationally important organization and collection of LGBTQ plus historic materials, and it's really played an essential role in preserving and telling the most mostly unseen stories of a community of women, including many who have contributed to America's cultural, political, and social history. So I think this is a really important layer to recognize. The Archives has made this row its home for over thirty years, for thirty years, and its long association and stewardship of the building have added this layer. And so while there may not be architectural changes that speak to it, I think that our designation will really highlight and celebrate this, this sort of layer, later, very significant layer of the building's history. And I'm delighted that it draws attention to, that our vote on this designation would draw attention to the importance of the Lesbian Hurstery Archives to New York City's history and the country's history and the LGBTQ plus community. So I would love to make a motion and vote on this today. Yes, Commissioner Goldblum, please go ahead again.
I just wanted to add to that. First of all, I think, you know, this is, this should be viewed as, as, as one of a series of really important designations that, that you've led the way on that relate to the cultural history of New York City and its various communities over the, over the last couple of years. But I mean, the interesting thing about this designation, unlike the Baldwin House, is, for instance, is, is how, how really this is a kind of, I don't know, bureaucratic's an awful word about, but it's, it's a kind of a, an administrative recognition that seeks to, through the designation process itself, kind of confirm a place of importance for this building, while admitting that it offers probably relatively little in the way of additional physical protection for the, for the physical object. And I think that, that's a very interesting way to look at it. And I'll bet you there's a, a large bucket of other buildings in New York City that deserve that kind of recognition and thoughtful designation for the purpose of creating that historical record that you referred to. And I would encourage the, the preserve, the staff to, the research staff to look at, at buildings from that perspective. I know they have all, lots of free time and nothing else to do, but I think that that's a good idea.
That's great. Thank you so much. Yes, Vice Chair Bland.
I just wanted to pile on to Michael's thoughts. And congratulate you, Sarah, again, on this theme or campaign that was initiated for all of us about the, about being forward-thinking about a cultural designation as opposed to just an architectural designation. And I think this is right in line with our society and its movements. And I think preservation being in line with societal movements is always critical, too. I have warned a little bit in the past that we better be careful about cultural designations, because after all, this is New York City. Every block has some interesting thing that happened on it, you know, and we have to be careful about those, those cultural significant happenings. But somehow, this, this one is so obvious. It's hard to put into words why this is so appropriate, and maybe other kinds of cultural designations might not be so obvious. This one is just so obvious. So, in any way, congratulations to you, but to all of us in a way, too, for this thematic road that we're on these days.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks. I appreciate those comments. All right, so I think if we can go ahead and make a motion, that would be great. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you be comfortable making a motion here?
Of course. So moved, to read the motion?
Yes, if you could read the motion.
Yes, I need to find it, and I'm sorry, I did not. I apologize. Just a second. Darn it. Here we go. I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the Lesbian Hurstery Archives, four-eighty-four Fourteenth Street, Borough of Brooklyn, as a New York City landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation as set forth in the designation report for LP dash two-six-six-two dated November twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two. I also move that the Borough of Brooklyn Tax Map Block one-one-zero-three, Lot thirty-one, be designated as its landmark site.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Mark, we call the vote.
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye, sorry about that.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Jefferson.
I'm here, but, oh. Aye.
Thank you. Eight in favor, none opposed. The motion passes.
All right. Thank you all. That's wonderful, and I'm delighted that this is our newest individual landmark. This is fantastic. Thank you. And we'll now move to our Preservation Department agendas. Thank you, Kate and Margaret, for all of your hard work.
All right. Good morning, everyone. We'll start today's Preservation Department agenda with public meeting items. The first is public meeting item number one, LPC twenty-two dash zero-six-nine-eight-one, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block sixteen-six-six, Lot forty-seven, two-seventy-four Malcolm X Boulevard in the Bedford-Stuyvesant Expanded Stuyvesant Heights Historic District. This is a store and flats building built circa eighteen seventy-nine. The application is to alter and enlarge the building, including replacing the facades. This is last presented at the public hearing of June seventh, twenty-twenty-two, and no action was taken at that time. The staff will present the revisions to the proposal.
Sorry about that. I'm mute. Good morning, Commissioners. Edith Belling has in Preservation Staff. The item before you is two-seventy-four Malcolm X Boulevard, located between Halsey and Macon Streets in the Bedford-Stuyvesant Expanded Stuyvesant Heights Historic District. Shown here are the existing conditions shown here. This application is to alter and enlarge the existing building. This was first presented at the Public Hearing and Public Meeting of June seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Skip ahead. Okay, so here we see the previously proposed building on the left. At that time, the majority of commissioners supported the new building in terms of the height and massing. However, no action was taken at that time, and the commissioners requested that the applicant re-study certain components of the proposal, specifically to refine the proportions and details of the upper-floor windows and cornice, to revise the brick color at the front facade, revise the ground floor to recall a commercial base, so it better relates to the streetscape, to include expansion joints at the side facade, and to slope the stair bulkhead and revise the cladding material at the bulkhead. So the applicants have returned with a revised proposal in response to these commissioners' comments. And I will briefly walk you through these changes, starting with the front facade, which is shown here on the right. So starting with the upper floors, the cornice and the window surround details have been refined, shown here. Additionally, the proportions of the window openings have been revised to allow for more masonry, specifically between the ground floor and the second floor levels, shown here. The brick color has been revised to a lighter, more weathered brick, and the ground floor revised to a storefront typology to better relate to this commercial street. And all is shown on this slide here. Just moving on to the other portion. Let's get to that slide. Okay, so then additionally, as shown here, the stair bulkhead has been sloped to minimize the visibility as seen from this view. And the cladding's changed to standing seam metal. And lastly, expansion joints have been introduced at the side facade. So here is what was previously shown, and then the revisions made. And the commissioners had no comments additionally about any of the massing shown here. So just going back to the front of the building, the applicants are here to answer any questions, but that concludes the revisions and how they've addressed them. Thank you.
Thank you, Edith. All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions for Edith or the applicant? All right, I don't see any questions. I will note, as you know, we have also received a letter from the Historic Districts Council addressing the proposed revisions that was shared with you all in advance of today, commenting mostly on some of the details. And if there are no other questions, then I think we'll go ahead and move to our discussion. So we had generally supported the idea of a masonry building of this size, height, and massing, and, and sort of general design, but did ask for a number of detail changes to the front facade, including at the storefront, the details on the upper floors, brick color, and some changes also to the articulation of the stucco on the side and rear facades and the bulkhead to sort of separate the bulkhead from the rest of the massing. So I think the applicants have made changes in response to each of those areas. And so we'll have a discussion to see how, how we feel about the proposal, the revised proposal today. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this one?
Sure. Um, this is, I think it's totally appropriate as, as presented. It's, it's an interesting project because it's, it really kind of shows you the formula. This is, this is how to, if you, if your intention as an applicant is to do something that fits in in a historic district in, in Brooklyn, for instance, this is how to do it, and it's just, looks like it's well done. And, you know, I would just encourage them to work with staff, make sure that the detailing of the lintels and the brick installation and all storefront details kind of carry it through, but I think that it's, it's a very good kind of template building. You know, I don't think it's really, you know, it's not an ambitious look-at-me kind of job. It's a, please don't look at me kind of job, but I think it does the right thing.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, along fine, don't look at me, comment. I have comments of the commissioners this morning, not just on this case, and kudos on the prior case as well. I can find this case appropriate to Commissioner Goldblum.
Okay, Vice Chair Bland.
You know, the great majority of buildings in New York shouldn't stand out. They fit in, but they shouldn't stand out, and I think that's what the vernacular of our entire city is, with these brilliant exceptions of the standouts. Special locations, special use, something like that. And we love those standouts, but the great fabric of our city is not that. And I think this is an example of that. And I think it's just fine, and it's, it's, it's elegantly detailed now. I think our comments were useful, apparently, to the, to the team, and they listened carefully, and I think they've got it right now, and it's quite an appropriate addition.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson.
Very much improved from the original. And what I like about it, it's a background building, of course, but they had detail in the new rendition. It's a, it's a beautiful little detail for the head. They did a nice job.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think this is one of those win-win situations. The applicant gets the function that they want out of this, out of this structure, and, and the district gets what it needs in terms of being one of those background buildings. I particularly um, background buildings. I particularly, uh, would highlight how well they did the, uh, the storefront. I think they, uh, they really did listen and did a, a terrific job, so, um, I thank them as well.
Right, great, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I agree. This is very well done and appropriate.
And Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, yes, uh, I agree. I think it's, uh, very appropriate as presented.
Okay, so I think we have a consensus. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you make the motion?
Sure. Regarding two-seventy-four Malcolm X Boulevard in the Bedford-Stuyvesant Expanded Stuyvesant Heights Historic District, the application is to alter and enlarge the building, including replacing the facades. Uh, let's see. I note that the building, existing building, was originally constructed as a wood frame building in about eighteen-seventy-nine, and that after the nineteen-eighties, the building was altered by widening the building and installing a cement block facade, infilling this, the, uh, ground floor storefront, and modifying the window openings. I further note that the Bedford-Stuyvesant Expanded Stuyvesant Heights Historic District is characterized primarily by row houses, flats, and small apartment buildings, many with ground floor storefronts and institutional buildings constructed mostly in the late nineteenth century. And that the west side of Malcolm X Boulevard, streetscape's, street, streetscape features small, mixed-use framed and masonry buildings, many of which have been highly altered. I recommend approval. Finding that the existing building has been heavily altered and is not one for which the historic district was designated. Therefore, the enlargement of the building and construction of new facades will not eliminate significant historic fabric. The massing, height, and composition of the facade will relate well to other buildings along Malcolm X Boulevard, thereby strengthening the character of the streetscape. That the streetscape is varied with a mix of residential and commercial on the ground floor, and that the design of the ground floor will recall the organization and character of storefront infill consistent with other buildings in the streetscape. That the proposed primary facade materials palette, including brick, cast stone, metal lower cornice, and fiberglass upper cornice and metal windows will harmonize with the masonry materials and finishes of buildings found throughout this historic district. That the proposed upper cornice will restore, will recall historic cornices of other neighboring buildings, and will provide determination to the facade that is in keeping with other buildings founded in the district. That the rear facade of the building will maintain the existing plane, that the fourth floor will be set back from the rear facade, therefore will not encroach further upon the central green space. The rear of the building, which is visible from the south along Macon Street, will feature stucco cladding, simple punched openings, and fire escapes, and is in keeping with other visible rear facades. That other buildings in the district feature visible rooftop bulkheads, including the neighboring buildings to the north. Therefore, the presence of visible stair bulkhead over the secondary facades is in keeping with the surrounding context, and that the proposed work will support the significant architectural and historic character of the streetscape and historic district.
Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Derek Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
With eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. All right, we'll now move to the next item.
The next item is Public Meeting Item Number Two, LPC twenty-three dash zero-four-four-two-three, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, block four-forty-three, lot sixty-two, two-eighty-one Carroll Street in the Carroll Gardens Historic District. This is a row house designed by William J. Bedell and built in eighteen-seventy-four, and the application is to amend and approval under LPC twenty-two dash one-two-one-four-zero to construct rooftop and rear yard additions. Uh, the staff will be presenting this proposal.
Uh, good morning again, Commissioners. Edith Belling has in Preservation Staff. Um, this item is two-eighty-one Carroll Street, located between Smith and Horton Streets in the Carroll Gardens Historic District. Uh, let me just flip ahead. Okay, um, so this is a proposal for a rear yard addition that was originally heard and approved by the commission on October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. The original proposal, um, which is shown here, uh, was for a three-story addition. The proposal was approved with the modification to reduce the height by one story in consultation with LPC staff. Um, and so, um, in response to that stipulation, uh, the applicants have reduced the height, um, as shown here in elevation. And the proposal before you today is to actually extend the second floor of the addition to match the approved projection of the basement level, which was approved. Um, so this was the three-story addition that was shown. You'll note that the projection of the basement is fourteen-six, um, but there was a setback. And so now, um, as shown here, the applicants are proposing to just extend out the second floor to match the approved projection, um, at the basement. Um, and so, uh, just quickly for reference, the, um, applicants have provided, um, some information about existing two-story additions within the block, um, just showing their, um, projection, uh, into the rear yard to show how, um, the subject property shown here at fourteen-six relates to the other projections, uh, within the block. Um, and then lastly, this is what was originally proposed at the three stories with a projection at the basement, and then, um, what's currently proposed, uh, which is just to match the projection at the second floor, um, while reducing by one story as, uh, required by the commissioners at the original approval. That's the change, and applicants are here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Edith. All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, I don't see any questions. Uh, uh, we'll note again, as you know, the Historic Districts Council sent us a letter with comments and revised proposals supporting the reduction in height. Okay, so I think if there are no other questions, we can begin our discussion, and this, you know, this was a three-story addition with a deeper basement level, and we, uh, approved that an addition here with a deeper, uh, basement level, um, if they reduced it by one height, or requiring that they reduce it by one height. Um, but in reducing it by that one height, they actually do want to align it with the basement level depth, which was previously approved. So I think it's fairly straightforward. Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start this one?
Thank you, sure. Uh, I think it's, uh, quite appropriate at this point. Uh, it's nicely done, and, uh, the reduction of the level, which was very important, has been done as we asked, so I can approve this as presented.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Oops. Hi there, sorry. Yeah, I agree. It's appropriate.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, likewise, yeah. I'm glad they reduced the height.
Commissioner Bland?
Agree, this is appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Gustafson?
And I agree, and I admire the applicant's bravery in coming back to us yet one more time voluntarily.
Blunt's for punishment.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Appropriate. Well done.
Okay, great. And I, you know, I think it was very helpful that they showed in the site plan that there are other, I think all of, almost all of the other two-story additions project out as deeply or comparable in depth, so it shows that it fits within the context. So Commissioner Chapin, would you go ahead and make the motion?
Sure, thank you. Uh, in the matter of a certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Brooklyn, LPC twenty-three zero-four-four-two-three, two-eighty-one Carroll Street, Carroll Gardens Historic District. A row house designed by William J. Bedell and built in eighteen-seventy-four. Application is to amend and approval under LPC twenty-two twelve, uh, one-four-oh, to construct rooftop and rear yard addition. I note that the building's scale, materials, and details are among features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Carroll Gardens Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the presence of a rear yard addition will be consistent with historic development of this building and other buildings of this, over time. If the simple massing and materials of the additions consisting of brick cladding and metal and wood window assemblies will be typical of secondary facades of buildings within this historic district, and in keeping with the residential character of the building and row. That the proposed two-story addition will not rise to the full height of the building, thereby preserving a sense of the building's original form and fenestration as part of a row, and that the modest depth of the addition will not diminish the presence of the rear yard or the block's central green space.
Thank you. Right, Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner, uh, Gustafson, would you second that motion?
You forget my name? The second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Uh, Derek Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
With eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Yeah, the next item is Public Meeting Item Number Three, LPC twenty-two dash one-two-one-two-one, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, block eighteen-sixty-nine, lot seventy-five-oh-two, seven-eighty Weston Avenue in the River Southwest End Historic District Extension Two. This is an arts and crafts style apartment building designed by George and Edward Bloom and built in nineteen-twelve and fourteen, and the application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of windows. This was last presented at the public hearing of October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, and no action was taken at that time. The staff will present the revisions to the proposal.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Larry, Preservation Staff. Previously, uh, at the public hearing, um, the proposal for a windows master plan was presented, uh, to, uh, basically replace all windows with one-over-one double-hung, uh, metal windows. The, uh, the primary facades, uh, the historic configuration, uh, was a variety of three-over-three. Uh, you can see in the wide bays, and then in, in some of the smaller narrow windows, there were two-over-tos, and then, and some of the bathroom windows are one-over-ones. Um, the commissioners felt that, uh, the multi-light configuration of the historic, uh, windows was, um, important, um, so no action was taken. The applicants have, uh, done a rethink. Uh, so if we get to the, uh, proposed, uh, facades at the two, uh, primary facades, Weston Avenue, and, uh, West ninety-six, eight street, uh, as well as, uh, there's a south return, uh, where you can see the limestone cladding, uh, comes back over the corner. Uh, they are now proposing, um, the three-over-one and two-over-one, uh, to match the multi-light configuration of the upper sash, uh, for the historic ones, but leaving the lower stash, uh, as a single light. Uh, so they're coming in with a sort of compromised proposal to see if the commissioners, uh, can support that. Um, uh, additionally, it's still, uh, proposing metal windows and to go with a sort of light beige finish. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so Commissioners, do we have any questions for Richard or the applicant? All right, um, so I think we can start our discussion, and, um, you know, this was another application where there were no historic windows, and the, or the majority of them had been replaced prior to designation, and, uh, the applicant was seeking approval for a master plan for one-over-one. And as, as often the case, our comments were, we were sort of split on this. Um, and so, uh, the applicants have come back, and they have proposed, uh, a three-over-one and a two-over-one to provide an articulation, some level of articulation in the windows that recalls the historic configuration while still providing some light, uh, a single light at the lower sash. And so we'll begin our discussion, uh, Commissioner Bland, I think the last time we saw this, you felt that the building was detailed enough that it could support one-over-one. Um, so I would imagine that you would be comfortable with the three-over-one or two-over-one, but let's.
Yeah, yep, I, I am. It looks great. No matter what I said earlier.
Okay, great, great. And, and Commissioner Chapin, I think you were also comfortable with the one-over-one last time, so with this compromise, I think would be probably fine for you. Is that right? Commissioner Chapin? Diana, you're muted. Diana, we can't hear you. You're muted.
Okay, sorry. I, I just kept, uh, not coming off. I'm having trouble with my, uh, yeah, it keeps, it keeps, I'm having trouble with, uh, my technology this morning, both on the iPad and now on the phone. Anyway, uh, thank you. Uh, I can, yes, I can approve this. Uh, I think it's a, it's a good compromise that does permit some additional, um, view and, and light, and at the same time, uh, achieves, uh, uh, a recognition of some of the, uh, historic fenestration.
Thank you. And, uh, Commissioner Shamir Baron, the last time you were sort of on the fence about this, so.
I think that the three-over-one does, in fact, um, recall the historic, and, um, and I think in, uh, and as well, it provides the needed, um, well, that doesn't matter. I think it recalls the historic, and that's what I was concerned about, and it does the trick, I think. So I think this is fine and appropriate.
Okay, great, thank you. And Commissioner Chen, I think you, um, would defer to the majority on this, so.
Yeah, I think this is a good compromise and an improvement over last time.
Okay, and Commissioner Gustafson, you were not comfortable at all with the one-over-one, and did specifically say you would want to see the original configuration. Does this compromise work for you?
That's not comfortable at all. Wow. Um, well, it's, it's, as always, it's, for me, it's, it's, it's a question of, um, um, the, the opportunity in a master plan, forever right or forever wrong. And, um, and it's this, um, this view, A-three, I'm glad this is the, uh, the view that's up there, uh, where you actually see how important the, um, that the, um, uh, the change is, and how, you know, you would have ended up if you had gone with, um, one-over-ones, you would have subtracted all of the, um, uh, the detail, um, and instead, we're, we're doing a, um, a really strong effort here to, um, uh, to, to create, to recreate the sense of, um, of those, um, the original windows. So I am happy with this. I think this is, uh, uh, this is appropriate.
Okay, great, thank you. And, uh, Commissioner Jefferson, you were not here for the original presentation, but you've heard the comments today, so.
It's, um, it's amazing to me, the, the change from the, the existing image, the new image, the richness of it. It's just, it's just a different, it's a beautiful facade, and I'm, I'm in Commissioner Gus, Gustafson, uh, camp in thinking, what if it was, you know, six-over-one? What it would be, it'd be so much richer. I, I oscillate between one-over-one, three-over-one, looking at this. It's just beautiful.
All right, great, thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum, you were also absent for the original group, uh, presentation.
Right, um, I love this building. I used to live near this building. It's a weird building. I mean, I don't know of any, I'm sure there are, but I just don't know of any other buildings from this period in this style in a glazed white brick. I mean, white brick has a very strong association, but it's not with this kind of building. And in the cornice, too, extremely unusual. I mean, and it's funny, because it's, it's like a block or two away from another incredibly unusual building that I think is also a Blum and Blum building, the one that's the Art Nouveau building. It's, it's a, it's a really interesting part of, of, of Weston Avenue, and, um, it's, it, it, this, I think that had I seen it originally, I would have supported the one-over-ones, which is off, off-brand for me sometimes, be, in, in light of the, uh, the, uh, high degree of, of detail that this building possesses. However, its uniqueness as a design, i- it's, this is a look-at-me building. And I, I think that its uniqueness as a design is strengthened and enhanced by the reimposition of the, of the three-over-ones in this case, or two-over-ones, the mullion top lights. I think it's a really strong addition. It'll, it'll bring this building even further into the foreground where it deserves to be.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks all for your comments. Okay, so I think I'll go ahead and read this motion. Let me just pull it up. All right, in the matter of docket number twenty-two, one-two-one-two-one, seven eighty West End Avenue in the Riverside West End Historic District Extension Two. This is an arts and crafts style apartment building designed by George and Edward Blum and built in nineteen twelve to nineteen fourteen. This is an application to establish a master plan governing the future installation of windows. And I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Riverside West End Historic District Extension Two. I recommend approval, finding that all of the historic windows at the primary facades were replaced prior to the designation of the historic district. That the proposed double hung windows will match the historic windows in terms of operation and details. That the proposed beige finish will harmonize with the existing windows and is consistent with the historic finishes found on buildings of this age and style. That the proposed two over one and three over one window configuration will recall the historic window configuration and is and is harmonious with the arts and crafts style of the building. That the building's robust masonry detailing gives the facade scale and texture and the relatively deep recess of the windows makes the window configuration less a less prominent characteristic of the facades and therefore the proposed modest change in configuration will not diminish the special character of the overall design of the building. And that the establishment of a map of this master plan will support the uniformity of the building's fenestration over time. Right, and Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Hi.
Commissioner Bland.
Hi.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Hi.
Commissioner Chapin.
Hi.
Commissioner Chen.
Hi.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Hi.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Hi.
With eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you. That's approved and thank you for thinking about the comments and making those changes.
It will now move to public meeting item number four, LPC twenty dash zero-zero-zero-five-two. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block eleven forty-four, lot fifteen, one forty-three West Seventy-Second Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. This is an art deco style commercial building designed by Vogue in Paris and built in nineteen thirty-five, further altered in nineteen eighty-nine by the Penta Group Architects. The application is to modify and legalize rooftop and rear yard additions constructed without LPC permits. This was last presented at the public hearing of November ninth, twenty twenty-one. No action was taken at that time. The staff will present the revisions to the proposal.
Good morning, Commissioners, James Rixielo, Preservation Staff. At the public hearing of November ninth, twenty twenty-one, the Commissioners saw an application to legalize work performed without permits at the commercial building, including constructing a stucco clad visible fifth story with bulkhead extended and extending the third and fourth floors at the rear and installing mechanical units attached to the rear wall. This work appears to have been completed around, prior to or around two thousand and seven. At the hearing, the majority of Commissioners recommended reducing and redesigning the massing of the rear addition, cleaning up and relocating the mechanical equipment, as well as redesigning the upper floor of the front facade to have a stronger relationship to its base and to its neighbors. The applicants have returned to the commission with a redesigned upper floor at the front facade clad in scored cementitious, cementitious stucco and with a new cornice detailing modeled after the nineteen thirty-five scalloped cornice and the central ornament recalling the nineteen eighty-nine addition, along with a large multi-light window assembly. At the rear, which is not visible from any public thoroughfare, the applicants now propose reducing the massing of the additions by replacing the heavy masonry parapet at the fourth floor with a railing with a railing and cutting back the fifth floor that was constructed without permits to align with the rear facade of one forty-five West Seventy-Second Street. The rear facades of the third and fourth floors will be rebuilt, the third, fourth and fifth floors will be rebuilt with in brick with punched openings. All the mechanical equipment will be relocated to more discreet locations at the rear yard, lot line wall, the basement facade and the roof of the fifth floor where it will not be visible from any public thoroughfare. Just get to that slide. The architect Greg Rothstein is here to answer your questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions for James or for the architect? All right, I don't see. Oh, yes, here we go. Commissioner Goldblum.
Why thin brick?
So I think we should open it up for the architect to answer that. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
Yes, so moved.
All right, Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, now the applicant may speak. Greg, do you want to answer the question about thin brick?
I'm not sure what you mean by thin brick.
Thought the description was given at the rear facade was going to be made out of thin brick. Is that, I mishear that?
I think we're going to match the brick that's there.
Okay, so it's regular old brick. It's not like.
It's a little brick.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, other questions? All right. Yes, Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead.
Am I, am I reading this wrong or right? You have no windows on the second or the third and fourth floor? Is that correct? In the back?
That's correct. That's the existing extension. There were never windows there.
Never. You had, you had an opening. You had a deck at one point, correct? Is that?
On the third floor.
Third floor. And then below that, there was no, okay, thank you.
Okay, but the lower floors, are they technically before us or is it really the the additions above the lower floors that are before us? Corey, I don't, do you want to answer that?
Well, because the, I think the treatment of the lower portions was modified to some extent and the Commissioner did ask for some cleaning up of other things attached to it.
Okay, got it. Great. Thanks. Okay, other questions? All right, I'm not seeing any other questions, so I think we can move to our discussion. So this was sort of somewhat complicated. There had changed, were changes that had happened right around the time of designation and after designation without permits and which included additions at the front and the back. And our comments were really to address those in terms of their design and massing to make them relate better to the building on which they were added. And so at the front, we asked them to lower the height and to articulate the facade in a way that would better relate to the building below. And at the back, we asked them to simplify the massing and push the top floor back to align with the neighbor, which they've done. And to lower the parapet height and to do a railing at the remaining addition and to otherwise simplify the accretions at the back and the mechanical equipment. So let's have a discussion on the, how how those changes have evolved and whether they now are appropriate. Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
Sure, sure. Excuse me. I think when you start with the front facade, they have done a really good job on that. They, if you, if you put the image of the front facade on, you would see that the symmetry of the front facade has been reinforced. And they have used elements of the front facade, the the decoration, the texture where the the ladder used to be, they use that to kind of reinforce that symmetry. I think they did a a really good job on the front facade.
Right.
Works for me. And if you go to the rear facade, the simplification of the volume, the simplification or the rationalization of the of the setbacks cleans that up and makes it work, making it work very well. The the carbuncles and all the mechanical equipment that was removed very good, works well. I think they did, they they took our suggestions and they did them well.
All right, great, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson.
Yeah, I I agree with Commissioner Jefferson. I think with regard to, I've just commented on the front facade, I mean, you've got a very unusual, bizarre situation and and I think they did the best that they could with that situation and have made it. I don't know what word I could use here. I'll call it they've normalized this bizarre building. And 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 I agree, they've they've also cleaned up the the rear and so I find it appropriate.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I agree with all of those comments, appropriate.
Commissioner Chape?
I I also agree with all of the Commissioners' previous comments and I think it's nicely done now at this one.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. The I, the stucco work on the front facade won me over and I think that it the 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 building was, the building has always been a kind of a standout on that block. I know it 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 diverges from its row. And interestingly, you you know, because of the work that's being done here, what was a very anomalous building is becoming a little bit less anomalous. And also, the building kind of got watered down as it went up, the the addition after the main body was kind of a little less, it's still quirky, but it's, it was less distinctive and didn't tie in with the with the ground floor, the the lower two stories. But the the modification of the top floor that Greg did really kind of sandwiches the whole building together in a very nice integrated way. So I think it's in general an improvement for the for the building and for the district.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, agree with all the comments. It's an improvement, especially on the front facade.
And and Vice Chair Bland?
Yes, now appropriate.
Okay, so I think we all agree on this one. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make the motion?
Sure. In the matter of LPC dash twenty dash zero-zero-five-two, one forty-three West Seventy-Second Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. Application is to modify and legalize rooftop and rear yard additions constructed without Landmark Preservation Commission permits. I note that the building's style, scale, material and details are among the features that contribute with a special architectural and historic character of the historic district. I recommend approval, finding that the presence of a rooftop addition and a large rear extension is in keeping with the history of change that has occurred at this building. Originally one of a row of nineteenth century houses, which was altered significantly by the removal of floors, redesign of the front facade and the addition of of upper floor prior to the designation of the historic district. That the height of the raised front facade at the fifth floor addition matched the uniform height of the adjacent historical building. That the modified continuous stucco facing and ornaments at the front facade of the fourth and new fifth floors, fifth stories and the proposed large multi-level window assembly will harmonize with the designed stone clad third floor added in nineteen eighty-nine itself harmonious with the art deco design of the historic two-story building base. That the removal of the flagpole and the ladder from the front facade and the visible exhaust pipe from the front of the roof will eliminate visual intrusion, intrusive elements from the facade, that the work at the rear of the building is not visible from any public thoroughfare. That the rear facade plane of the rooftop addition would be cut back to align with the plane of the adjacent rear facade and clad in brick to better relate to other altered rear facade on the block. That the parapet wall at the upper terrace at the rear will be removed and replaced by railing, thereby reducing the overall mass of the extension. That the facade plane of the rear extension in matching that of the previous extended cellar to the second floor, second floor below, does not further encroach upon the building's remaining shallow rear yard or significantly diminish the character of the interior of the block, which is no longer retains a traditional residential green space. That the proposed alteration fenestration at the rear facade of the rooftop addition and rear extension includes the creation of a regular space punch windows opening is in keeping with the rear facade of other buildings on the block, that the proposed work to clear up and regulate the rear facade, including relocating mechanical equipment to the roof, replacing metal infill panels with stucco painting in interior facade brown and the fire escape black and replacing leaders will provide a more uniform condition and appearance. That the change of overall massing at the of the building is compatible with the history of change at the building and surrounding buildings in the block and is not overwhelm the streetscape or the open space of the interior of this commercial block. And the corrective work will better integrate the alterations with the building and surrounding buildings on the block. That's it. I think, yeah.
Sorry, I was muted. All right, and Commissioner sorry, Commissioner, sorry, I already got you. Commissioner Chape, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. And we'll now move to the next item.
And the next item is public meeting item number five, LPC twenty-three dash zero-two-nine-seven-five. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block four forty-eight, lot five, one-twelve Second Avenue in the East Village Lower East Side Historic District. This is a Gothic Revival style church building designed by Samuel Burridge Reed and built in eighteen ninety-one to ninety-two. The application is to demolish the remaining facade and foundation after the building experienced a fire. This was read into the record at last week's public hearing, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. However, it was not presented, so this will be presented for the first time today and public testimony will be taken after we open the hearing.
Okay, thank you. So let's go ahead and open up the hearing. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the hearing is open and the applicants may begin.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Anthony, if you could just click on your screen, you will be able to control the slides. And you can advance using your arrow keys or your mouse. Perfect. Please state your name for the record and you may begin.
The Middle Collegiate Church, in connection with this application for a certificate of appropriateness. As some of you may know, the Collegiate Church is the oldest incorporated denomination in the United States. Middle Church is known for having one of the most contemporary ministries in the city of New York. I'm going to briefly introduce the application and the presenters and then we'll, we'll walk you through the unfortunate tragic circumstances that brought us here today and how we, the church would like to to move forward. Next slide, please, Anthony. So on the on the night of December fifth, twenty twenty, a fire started in the apartment building next door to Collegiate Church, corner of Seventh and and Second Avenue. The fire spread and resulted in the complete destruction of the church building. The fire spread and resulted in the complete destruction of the church building. This is not the type of application that any of us ever want to have to contend with. Um, it is unusual because it involves the demolition of the remnants of what had been a building in a designated historic district. It is certainly not unprecedented, and it's consistent with the purpose of statute, which is to enliven and protect the contribution that historic districts make to our community. In the immediate aftermath of the fire, the Fire Department ordered that the property be made safe. As I think many of you know, the Fire Department only overrides your authority if there's a imminent danger of collapse, emergency. But where it's possible to secure, um, whatever is left of the structure, uh, they order uh, that to be done. And it was done in this case at a cost of approximately four million dollars, and you'll see the results of that in a moment. At the time, the adjacent property owner, uh, Faith Popcorn, uh, where the building uh, fire had started, uh, entered into an access agreement with the church that allowed the equipment to be moved in and the work uh, to be done as ordered by the Buildings Department. That access agreement expired in the beginning of twenty twenty-one. And despite efforts which continued up to and including just a few months ago, um, we have been unable to negotiate a new access agreement uh, with her. And as you'll see, um, that means that the site is only uh, interval from the uh, from the front. The uh, Reverend Dr. Jaclyn Lewis, who is the Senior Minister of the Church, will describe the church, its relationship to the neighborhood which um, the district is located, and the impact of the fire. Anthony Johnson has been the church architect for almost twenty years. He will describe uh, some of the specific features that were called out in the designation report that are destroyed or damaged. Um, and uh, uh, it's important in that context to bear in mind that the building for which these architectural features were designed no longer exists. The uh, in the in the uh, uh, immediate aftermath of the expiration of the access agreement, I was engaged by the church to assist them with this project. The first meeting that I arranged with senior landmark staff at the site was for the purpose of determining whether or not we could create an opening in the base of the gable in order to be able to bring in equipment to do waterproofing. At that point, there was no thought about uh, demolishing the entire uh, gable, uh, let alone the 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 towers. Um, the day that we went there, the construction worker who opened up the the gate to give us access showed us a large piece of limestone that had fallen to the sidewalk in front of the church at some point uh, since he had been there last. Subsequent to that, the church engaged, um, they were able to do the waterproofing work, notwithstanding the lack of access, by getting entry into the into the site. Um, and when you see some of the photos, or any of you have gone by to look at the site, the waterproofing to some extent disguises the extent of the damage, and both Anthony and our engineer will discuss that in more detail. The church then engaged a structural engineering firm, Ancora. Um, they are not design engineers per se, they are constructibility engineers. They are engaged to develop means and methods in order to be able to implement designs. Some of you may recall that Ancora was performing this role for the synagogue at sixty-four North Oak Street, which had a similar catastrophic fire, leaving only the towers and a wall. Um, and were involved with attempting to deconstruct those elements when a fatality occurred, killing one of the um, the workers. Uh, they were attempting to determine whether or not any of the portion could be um, reused. Uh, that was also a certificate of appropriateness application, not a hardship application, as some have suggested, which the statute clearly doesn't require. One significant difference between this application and sixty-four North Oak Street is that there is no developer waiting in the wings. In that case, the synagogue had been in discussions with the developer about doing something with the site. Um, and subsequently, uh, the property was sold to the uh, to the developer. Here, this is a middle church with its own resources, uh, there is no um, real estate deep pocket standing behind them. In any event, uh, Stephen Lampert will present his assessment um, that, again, while there is not an immediate danger of collapse, there were large areas of masonry that are subject to coming loose from any steps necessary uh, to provide additional protection, um, deconstruction, reconstruction, or even additional inspection. Constructibility, in addition, for all practical purposes, is impossible. Mark Drazdoff is an expert on construction safety. He is a licensed site site safety manager. He is a instructor on OSHA guidelines, um, and he is going to comment briefly on the uh, his opinion that the immediate known risks must be eliminated before attempting to determine if um, they're even worse than they appear on the surface. And and that um, the ability to uh, secure the site uh, based on what is already known is consistent with the Ancora recommendations. In in considering these two approaches in the context of appropriateness, uh, please bear in mind that further investigation and construction, even if it could be safely done, which our experts do not believe is the case, um, will would involve um, cutting new openings in the tower, um, uh, potentially cutting through portions of the limestone blocks to in order to remove them for repair or replacement, and opening up um, the base of the gable to allow the entry to um, for construction equipment in order to stabilize the rubble berm. Those are all um, concepts that are included in the report um, by the consulting engineer that was engaged by the Landmarks Commission. And I think that's important to keep in mind, because at the end of the day, you have to determine whether those steps would further compromise the integrity of the design, assuming that they could be done safely, uh, which we suggest is is not the case. Finally, uh, Vicky Burns is the Chair of the Church Consistory, uh, its board. She will describe Middle's commitment to build a new church, respectful of the district, the church's own history, and its contribution to the vitality of the of the district, and the importance of being able to move forward. Then Jackie Lewis will will make some concluding remarks, and of course, would be happy to answer questions uh, when the commissioner is ready. So with that, I'm going to ask Jackie to uh, to step to the podium and we'll proceed with the presentation.
Thank you so much, Ken. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you about our story. I am the Senior Minister of Middle Collegiate Church. I've been there for eighteen years, leading this community that uh, is said about us, that we look like the subway, but we feel like home. Uh, we are a mashup of Broadway and gospel music, uh, revival and therapy, it's said, joy and love. But a fire we did not start destroyed our home. How can I describe our horror on that fateful morning? Here's what it was like. Can you please show the video?
Can you see that? Can you hear the the?
Friends, Middle changed along with our city. We tried to show that clip to you to give you a sense of both the damage to the building, but also our activism in the city, our activism in the world. This is who we are. And over time, we have been God's hands and feet in the city, we would say. We fed poor immigrant children from Ukraine. We helped HIV/AIDS patients live with dignity and bury them when they died. We've opened our doors on nine eleven, when our neighbors needed shelter. And when the explosion across the street from us took down that building, we housed our firemen and first responders. We worked against guns and poor marriage equality. For trans rights, racial justice, and a woman's right to choose. We fed the folks, offered new clothing for folks to get back to work, and worked for a living wage. We hosted twelve step and after-school programs. And the fire took down our building, but it did not destroy our movement. We trained ten thousand people in anti-racism after George Floyd's murder and grew our community in these last two years by six hundred and eighty people into a global community of two thousand. But the East Village is our roots, and that matters to us. It's why we decided to build our future here. In the past two years, in good faith, we've spent countless human hours and four point two million dollars with our experts to secure, clean, stabilize our site, and to brace and protect our badly damaged facade. We did that while worshiping. We did that for while marching for justice. We did that for standing up for those on the margins. Our experts will testify to why, even with that outrageous investment, the facade impedes our rebuild. Inside the Collegiate Church, friends, we are at a crossroads, facade? Or church? Historic stones or an historic community working for the future of our city and our nation? Which matters most? We need your support. Our experts will say more. Thanks.
Morning. I'm Anthony Johnson, the architect for the church. So I'll walk you through uh, the situation, the conditions of the facade and the site. And then Stephen Lampart will continue on with that. So here's a photo of the church before the fire. Uh, it's limestone, rusticated limestone facade, uh, north and a south tower, uh, stained glass throughout. You can see the the building to the to the left is where the fire started. And then here's a photo of the uh, the immediate aftermath, so the you see on the left, there's just a shell of the building where the fire started. Uh, the church you see through the where the stained glass windows were. Uh, the roof is gone, the structure behind the facade is gone. Uh, all of the stained glass, uh, presumably or possibly Tiffany is all gone. Um, the doors are are warped and buckling. Um, you can see smoke damage on the towers and above the the arched window on the gable. I'll continue on. So the and in in the, oops, sorry, went too far. In the immediate aftermath, in this in this slide, you can see the the tracery, the carved tracery where the stained glass windows were is still here. Uh, the Building Department ordered them removed. Uh, they were loose and moving. And that was a danger to the to the public, so they were moved. You can see above the arched window, uh, the smoke damage, and there's uh, the heat damage above there where the fire came through, um, creating spalling conditions and just general deterioration of the limestone. Uh, in addition, there's a a large crack along the north tower at along the side of the buttress, and on the south, the south corner, uh, where the facade meets the side bearing wall. So in in addition to the damage that the fire did to the facade, uh, this slide shows uh, additional work that will have to be done to the facade. So the building was built in eighteen ninety-one, before modern uh, building codes existed. There was only a a six-foot-wide entrance into the sanctuary, and on the side, on the south side, a forty-two-inch or forty-inch door. So the the exiting is uh, does not satisfy modern building codes, and will certainly need to satisfy current codes in the rebuild of the church. It took to accommodate the the occupancy, will need roughly double the amount of egress that's there now, so instead of uh, seventy-two inches, we'll need a hundred and forty inches at the main entrance, and we would need uh, eighty inches as opposed to the forty inches existing on the south. Um, in addition to this, in order to bring equipment into the site, since this is the only access to the site, we'll have to go up higher than what we're showing here, and would go up and take out the majority of that middle entry vestibule. But but the the front facade doesn't really tell the story. The the fire and the heat was most intense to the rear, the rear of the facade. Um, this photo was taken uh, directly after the fire. Uh, you can see off to the right, the north sanctuary wall was uh, ordered taken down by the Building Department to allow access to the site, and you can see the arm of some equipment reaching in uh, at that time doing their work. Um, the the roof is obviously gone, the floor is gone, uh, the walls are gone. Um, and what's left is a badly damaged facade. It's it's less than a shell of the of the church, of the congregation that was there. So I'll take you through uh, the towers and the spire, and then uh, Stephen Lampart will will continue on with the rest of the site constraints and the rest of the the construction. So this is a photo of the masonry at the, this, the photo was of the north tower, but it's representative of all the masonry on the back of both towers, on the back of the gable, and the side uh, party wall to the to the south at the Hopper House. So you can see that there's heavy spalling, uh, there is brick is missing, um, there's mortar missing. Um, and large portions of the the masonry were painted with a protective waterproof membrane uh, early on in the after the fire, and this falling continues even through the even through the waterproofing. But what the waterproofing does is it hides the conditions, so when you're standing there, you don't really see how bad it is. These photos were taken before the waterproofing was applied. And so this is the south, the south tower, the south spire. On the left is a before photo, and on the right is the current condition. So the you can see on the right, all of these pieces of stone, these are all large dimensional pieces of stone. Um, they were all sharp corners, very crisply done. Um, the fire, the heat caused them to the spalling to deteriorate and basically erode all of the, all of the surfaces. Uh, a lot of the mortar is missing. All of these surfaces, if you look carefully, the they're all cracking and the surfaces are coming apart. So these are So these are all loose pieces of stone far overhead. In some cases, it's hard to tell if this crack line, for example, is a fracture in the stone or if it's just a little bit of spalling. We're not able to get close enough to see more than this. This was taken from a distance with a large lens. And then these are the finials on the south tower. So you can see how the spalling works. Right here on the left, you can see at the top, the piece has already broken off. Down below that, the piece is cracked and is separating, but hasn't fallen off yet. Off to the right, there's a piece that will shortly fall, I assume. You can see daylight between the falling piece and the finial itself. And on the right, you can see the other finial. And it's hard to tell if it's just been eroded from the heat in a crooked way or if it's starting to tip, but it's not straight anymore. And you also can see that all the mortar has gone between the pieces of stone. So then on the north tower, which again was closer to the fire and closest to the most intense heat, the dormer window, there are large areas where the stone has started to spall or is spalling. There are pieces that have already broken off. The two side pieces on the dormer window, what was once a large dimensional piece of stone is now fractured into a half a dozen pieces. So these are large pieces of stone. There is no mechanical fasteners, there's no mortar. They're held in place by gravity or friction. In addition to the rusticated stone going up the spire, a lot of that is all spalling and has a lot of loose pieces. The finial base on the right, four of the finials have disappeared, but you can see the base here below them. So this is, again, these are large dimensional pieces that have fractured. These are not joints that are just opened up. They're all just badly damaged, held in place by gravity or friction, large pieces overhead, presenting a danger to people below and to workers. And then in terms of repair, so we didn't do any invasive probes. It's too dangerous, but we know certain things from historical documents. We have from the contemporaneous to the church's construction. We have two sections from the Comedown White which show a similar load-bearing masonry construction with a limestone facade with a brick backup. And you can see that the stone interlocks with the masonry, working as one. It's not just a veneer. And then to the right here, from the Indiana Limestone Institute, very similar construction. It's a church, limestone church, similar sized pieces, similar construction. And you can again see the interlocking, which is extremely close to the shot on the right, which is the facade. It's again the corner of the north tower. And you see how the stone interlocks with the brick. So some of the stone can be, some of the damage is simpler to repair. It's more on the surface, and maybe a Dutchman can be made, or you can scrape off some of the loose stone to make it safer. But a lot of the stone that's dimensional and it's fractured is integral with the brick. And in order to take that out, you risk, basically you have to dig it out of the masonry, which itself is damaged. And by doing that, you risk further destabilizing the facade. So it's a very difficult situation to repair. I'll turn it over to Stephen Lampard, who's an engineer from Ancora.
Thank you, Anthony. Good morning, everyone. Steve Lampard, Principal Engineer, Ancora Engineering. What we have up here right now is a picture of the remnant facade in its current state. Basically, three pieces of remnant facade bolted together with steel bracing after the fire to achieve temporary stability. Pardon our technical difficulties here.
Can you see the photo now? Is that better?
Are you guys able to see the slide 15 screen?
We have slide 15 up.
Thank you, I apologize. Just to reiterate, again, in slide 15 here, we are seeing three pieces of the remnant facade wall all bolted together with steel bracing after the fire to achieve temporary global stability of that remnant facade. What we also can see here is the waterproofing applied on the backside of the remnant facade to, in an attempt to stop further deterioration of the brick due to weather conditions and things of that nature. But what we really would like to convey here is that this view with the waterproofing isn't indicative of the current state that the facade has been damaged. What we can see in the next slide, Anthony, please. Slide 16 is indicative of the damage that was caused by the fire at the job site or at the church. On the left-hand side here, we have the south tower view. And what I would like to point out here is the missing set of stairs that was completely deteriorated and damaged by the fire, missing now from the ground floor up to around the third floor. Then we have a view of the foundation bracing debris that was implemented to laterally stabilize the foundation wall after the fire. And third of all, we can see here at the third floor a gravity load transfer of the upper half of the tower down to the lower half, creating a soft story. Moving into the middle photo, we get a representation of the gable in its current, or in its condition after the fire. We have brick destabilized at the local locations where the roof trusses were once connected prior to the fire. Loose and deteriorating brick occur at that location right now. We have a lower-level windowsill at the main window in the gable, which is showing damage from the fire as well. We also see that we have loose limestone capping working vertically up the entire triangular shape of the gable, all the way up to its apex. Moving to the third photo on the right, we have the north tower. Again, here, we can see the fire is completely damaged and the stairs are now no longer existing. We have the same third-floor transfer of gravity loading in this tower as well, creating a soft story at that level. And here, we can also see that we have damaged load-bearing brick behind the limestone facade. Next slide, please. In slide 17, I just kind of wanted to show a further investigation, a more close-up investigation of the windowsill that I previously commented on in my last slide. Here, you can see underneath the deteriorated limestone sill itself, you have loose mortar missing from the bricks that are supporting it. And the main point of this photo is to emphasize that this is in a high-risk zone. It is above where the main entry currently is to the job site off Second Avenue and a point where one would have to look to logistically enlarge openings to bring mechanical equipment onto the job site. Next slide, please. Again, this slide 18 here is a further close-up investigation that we were able to get up the south tower. And again, I think what I'm looking to try and highlight to the group here is this again is a high-risk zone because this shot was taken with just a high telephoto lens where we were able to get a glimpse of the wood-burnt lentil trying to do its job in carrying gravity loads down from the masonry arch above that window that has now also seen fire damage to the brick and mortar itself, just indicative of some of the damage that may be unknown up inside these towers. Next slide, please. This slide 19 is a representation of my first looks at trying to put a logistics plan together for this job and try and move forward with investigation, further investigation, or even moving into a constructibility phase where we would look to try and do some localized removal of some of the issues that we pointed out today. What I wanted to point out, though, is that you'll see a large number of areas that have varying colors, different lines. And what this is a representation of is a large number of locations needing logistics protections and bracing that, once you start to tackle one area, becomes a domino effect of leading to very difficult and very high-risk logistical operations to even further investigate the site. Next slide, please. In conclusion, I would like to make the statement that I believe that the limestone facade is in disrepair and beyond its lifespan. The brick structure supporting it is compromised as well and really presents numerous safety and logistical concerns, even moving forward with an investigation or a construction to determine if the retention of the facade is warranted. I feel we are currently in a high-risk condition on this job site to workers and investigation teams that would be brought onto the job site. I don't believe there is a capability to safely brace, enter, or stabilize the rubble foundation wall without putting these investigative teams or workers in an even further high-risk situation. And with that, I would like to turn the presentation over to Mark, who is our safety professional for the project. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mark Drozdoff. I am an Executive Vice President of Lozier Inc., a professional engineering and environmental health and safety New York firm established in 1925. I hold numerous professional certifications, including being licensed by the New York City Department of Buildings as a Site Safety Manager and a Registered Construction Superintendent. I'm an OSHA-authorized instructor and teacher at the Cooper Union just down the street from the church site. For over 30 years, my professional career has focused on environmental health and safety, hazards remediation, and risk assessment. This has included assessments of numerous fire scenes, construction projects, and accidents and fatalities. After reviewing the reports of Ancora Engineering as well as Mattson Engineering, my site visits and information provided to me by the church's owners reps and construction managers, my assessment is that the attempting to do further testing for stabilization would be contrary to good industry safety practice because the known risks are high and must be eliminated before additional site work is done or creating new risks. Construction is an inherently dangerous line of work and one where serious accidents and fatalities regularly occur. Even under the best circumstances, jobs have the potential to cause severe or disabling injuries. Because of this, U.S. National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health, NIAS, and OSHA have developed a hierarchy for the hazard control and risk treatments. The first step is identification of hazards with a high probability of injury. Once these have been identified, NIAS and OSHA make it a priority to physically remove the hazards to avoid the associated risks. This takes priority over the replacement of the hazardous condition by substitution, isolating people from the hazards through the passive or active engineering controls or worker training and PPE, which should only be deployed after the known hazards are eliminated. In the case of 112 Second Avenue site, conditions posing a threat to worker safety are readily apparent. Multiple cracks in what has been large solid pieces of limestone at the top of the structures, lullabies head high and in the doorway arches are visible in multiple places and held in place only by inertia or gravity. We may not be able to predict what might cause a particular piece to fall at any time, but we know the risk is there, which is one of the reasons DOB required the sidewalk shed bridge to be constructed in the front and then identified movement in the charred wooden window tracery even after the bracing was installed and ordered to be removed. Damage over the extensive portions of the brickwork behind the limestone was documented before the interim waterproofing was applied and included missing and broken bricks in numerous places. This type of damage, as well as the limestone cracking damage, is consistent with the thermal shock of the type expected when superheated masonry was exposed to high-pressure cold water by FDNY over an extended period while the fire was still ongoing. While the structure is currently braced, may appear to be globally stable, that does not diminish the high probability that the portions of the masonry are at risk of falling at any time. That probability goes up with vibration, shaking, or other disturbance whether from trying to further assess the conditions or to attempting to install scaffolding or other bracing. To attempt any intrusive activities, even for the purpose of further investigation, means exposing workers to the known risks and dangers of overhead falling objects. It also means exposing workers to the instability of the debris pile that was pushed up against the Second Avenue side of the foundation to support the global stability, and is not secured by any engineering means. It is unknown whether the pile can carry any additional weight or be relied upon. And it is a major risk, given the consequences of an error of conception, design, or execution as it occurs. To stabilize the pile would require the gable entrance to be widened to allow the entry of any construction equipment itself at this destabilizing alteration. Those risks are compounded by the acknowledged dangerous condition of the towers, which essentially function as chimneys, channeling the fire from the base of the opening to the top. As said in the Mattson report, we don't know and can't know without invasive intervention how extensive the damage is. But the danger to workers, based on what is already known, is acknowledged by Mattson's report. In order to further assess the tower interior conditions, it appears that cutting new openings in the tower brick will be necessary, with no way to know whether that will cause any of the masonry to fail and fall. Similarly, any work in the interiors, if it were to be undertaken, apparently involves penetrating the remaining masonry with needle beams as well as other openings presenting similar risks of disturbance. The Mattson report does not provide means and methods. Instead, it assumes that they can be identified, no matter how complicated or unconventional. The report acknowledges that there may not even be one. In the other words, no complete assessment can be made of the internal condition without encountering... In the other words, no complete assessment can be made of the internal condition without encountering high level of risk. In short, that report does not have, as its starting premise, the elimination of risks prior to attempting any work contrary to the NIAS/OSHA hierarchy of controls. It recommends taking on additional risks to determine and address the extent of already identified risks before eliminating them. In contrast, the Encore report recommends an elimination strategy that reduces workers' risks to the largest extent. It would use heavy equipment to push the structure into the site, starting from the top and away from the workers and the public street. I believe that this is the correct application of the NIAS/OSHA hierarchy of controls and is the approach I recommend, given the risks involved on the site. Thank you.
There we go. Hi, everybody. Thank you for this time and opportunity to tell our story. My name is Vicki Burns. I'm the chair of Middle Collegiate Church. You know, we're just days away from the second anniversary of the fire that destroyed Middle. We all know that that happened on December fifth, two thousand and twenty. What I want to relate is the first call I got was from one of our ministers. But the first call I made was to my New York City newsroom because as a longtime broadcast journalist, I knew that Middle's trauma was going to be shared by New York, the nation, and beyond. And here we are, even through the fog of devastation, trauma, and grief. We've been focused with singularity on Middle rising. Our congregation, our community, is committed to the church's resurrection, committed to doing so on the Lower East Side. We've done our due diligence. There were other options to responsibly explore, and yet the response has been consistent. With the support of Middle's congregation, our community, and the collegiate churches of New York, we committed to rebuilding on the Lower East Side. History matters. Middle has been part of the Lower East Side since the sixteen hundreds, since the very beginning of the church, with three locations over those centuries, originally Wall Street and now on Second Avenue. Our legacy of service is strong and remarkable, providing spiritual and physical care to generations of people. You heard Jackie say earlier that the fire came during a pandemic, right? And even with a pandemic and a fire, the congregation has grown by many hundreds of people. We are committed to do the work as a progressive, inclusive ministry into the twenty-first century and beyond. To borrow wise words from another great minister, we are confronted with the fierce urgency of now. The time for mourning the loss of our beautiful and historic place of worship is behind us. Now we're focused on the future to our campaign that will allow Middle to rise. So we can be about the work that our neighborhood and our city and our country needs for Middle Church. And we need your support to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vicki. Thank you, team. Friends, never has the revolutionary love of Middle Church been more urgent. The violence, the bigotry, the hatred against Jews, blacks, trans folks, and women, the poverty and environmental disasters, books banned, bodies blown apart by bullets. We've got to get back to church. I can't imagine what we could have done with four point two million dollars to build a building that was worthy of our landmark status and that also could take us into the future. We can't get that back, but I don't think we can afford to not move forward to spend more time testing, probing, proving what our experts have said, our independent experts have said. We've grown from fourteen hundred to two thousand members in these last two years. Our communities, our nation, the East Village, needs us to get back to church. So we hope, because we chose this option, to rebuild on the Lower East Side, on that historic site. We hope that LPC and our community will also choose us. Build a building worthy of the past, when it can take us into the future and honors the urgency of now. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for the detailed presentation. And as was stated in your Can't hear me?
We got you now.
There we go.
That concludes our presentation. Of course, we'll be happy to answer questions later.
Okay, great. Thank you. And so as was mentioned in the presentation, the commission has retained consulting engineer Madsen Consulting Engineering to evaluate the site and the feasibility of reconstruction. So Eric Madsen did investigate the site and prepare a report, which was distributed to all of the commissioners in advance of today's hearing. And he is here if the commissioners have any questions for him. And I think he may actually have, I think he's going to actually summarize some of his comments for us. So Eric, would you please go ahead?
Sure. My name's Eric Madsen. I was asked by the LPC to review the available documents and the existing structure in regards to the feasibility of reconstruction or demolition. My information at the time was my site visit, the Encore report, and the PDF presentation of Anthony Johnson, which we saw most of that today. I think they've added some important parts to that. So at the time, my understanding was to review the documentation. I am an engineer, so I want to apply science to this. In reviewing the site, the global stability of the structure appears sound. The building was braced immediately after the fire by Howard Shapiro and Associates, under the close watch of Tim Lynch from DOB. When we met on site, I think we all agreed, and I think the applicant also agreed, the site is generally stable. There are clearly issues of local instability that do need to be addressed. And worker safety is a critical issue that we do need to take care of. So I was pleased to see Mark on the phone address that today. Obviously, there's numerous challenges on the site. Among these are the access of the bell tower interior, repair of the bell tower roof, repair of the mortar in the front wall base, the foundation, as well as over the arches, the windows and doors. There were cracking areas, the dormer windows. These all need to be addressed. So the engineering specifics of how to address that and why or why they could not be addressed were not clear to me with that information. And in my report, I attempted to discuss what the current state of the masonry could be, how it could be remediated. Now, I don't want to plant a flag to say this absolutely should be remediated and repaired. This is more of, I'm trying to get at the root of what is the true state of the building? So I think that the applicant has done a good job of showing a lot of these parts. What I wanted to discuss was the science behind it. So the fire, the brick and the limestone damage at different rates. The limestone is much more vulnerable to the fire. So you could see that the bell tower, the tops of the bell tower on the east side, the inside face, were damaged, whereas the brick below it was in much better condition. Bricks are created in a kiln at very high temperatures, and therefore they can withstand very high temperatures. That's part of the design of most of the row houses in the city was to build brick walls, which could survive a fire, keep standing, and be reused as necessary. So I was looking for more of what can and cannot be done here. So in general, that's the concept of my report was to say, how do we access this? How do we repair it? And where do we go from here? And so if it's I really don't want to say too much more right now, but if possible, I would like to maybe ask some questions of the applicant that I think might help the LPC towards their decision. So I will turn it back over to LPC.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if there are questions you want to ask right now or if you want to think about it some more as we move forward in the process and sort of put together a complete set of questions at a later date that would be submitted.
That's fine.
Okay, whichever you're comfortable with. Okay. So I'd like to turn back to the applicant, and I think that, as you know, there are some questions still about the condition. And I think there are concerns about safety, about doing more investigative work and the safety of that. But there are still some questions I think we need answered to understand whether or not reusing the fabric is feasible and how we can do that in a safe manner. And so I think that's something that we'll want you to work with our engineer on as we continue to move through the process. Is there anything that applicants would like to say now before we move to public testimony or questions?
I think we'll make some comments after we hear what everybody else says.
Okay, all right. Great. Commissioners, do we have specific questions right now for the applicants or for our engineer Eric Madsen?
I would want to ask one question just to first, Madsen. You heard the concerns expressed by the site safety engineer about the potential for loose stones falling. Is it your view that those pose an unusually high safety risk? Where would you put this in terms of of manageability in terms of the construction process?
I agree. I think walking on site, trying to do work right now without performing a detailed assessment of those risks would clearly be unsafe. I absolutely agree with that. And what I was trying to prompt with my report was the discussion by the applicant to the feasibility or not. For example, could you do a local law eleven inspection with a boom truck with minimal hands-on, I mean, you can touch it, but without drilling, without anything like that? Can it be assessed in the way a local law eleven report is done? Would that be feasible or infeasible? Would scaffolding be required? And they were speaking towards a scaffolding, and I certainly see merit in that discussion of what the applicant is saying. I was looking for these things to be addressed because obviously you would need to do a local law eleven type inspection, a facade inspection, find these areas of loose material and remove them. And then, is that feasible, right? Again, what is the cost to the church for this? What is the time? So I'm trying to look at these and get this assessment. I think the applicant's team, you know, they have means and methods engineering, they have site safety. I think these are things they can speak to, and I'd like them to. And I think that may help the LPC make their decisions.
Thank you. Right. Any other questions, commissioners? All right. I don't see other questions at this time, so why don't we move to public testimony? I know we have a number of people who have signed up to speak. We will start with anyone who signed up in advance and then get to everyone else. But we'll ask all members of the public who would like to speak to raise their virtual hand, whether you signed up or not, so that we can identify you as we move through the signup sheet and then get to everybody else. So I'm going to turn this over to Gregory Kala to take us through the public testimony.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. As mentioned, we do have a number of signups for this application. So I'll be going through the list right now. The first that is currently in the room is Richard Moses. So, Richard, I will be promoting you to panelist now. So if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Richard Moses, president of the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative, also known as LESBI. We LESBI are very concerned about the fate of the facade of the Middle Collegiate Church Building, one of the most important historic structures within the East Village Lower East Side Historic District. We are certainly sympathetic with the congregation and the very real and difficult challenges it has faced and continues to face. However, the demolition of the church, which has served as both an architectural and spiritual beacon for over a century, would have a huge impact on the community as well as the special character of this very important historic district. Having attended a meeting and presentation with the church's minister and professional team, I'm aware of the many obstacles the congregation faces in trying to rebuild. But with all due respect to the professional team, we believe that it is imperative that an independent architect engineer specializing in historic preservation with extensive experience in similar projects be brought in to assess the building and prepare a feasibility report outlining all available options. The report should include the option of restoring the facade masonry as well as strategies for carrying out the new construction work with what we understand to be limited, difficult access to the site behind the facade. Based on our observation, excuse me, of the current facade conditions, we feel that although a certain amount of its Gothic Revival ornamentation and its ashlar has been damaged or destroyed by the fire, which has been shown in the presentation today, a significant amount remains in what appears to be good or very good condition. It seems feasible that a good part of the Indiana limestone masonry, which is a very durable stone, could be retained and serve as a model for restoring missing or damaged units, potentially allowing for the facade to be saved. This appears to be not out of line with the commission's consultant's report on the facade conditions. Therefore, we believe it is critical that a full and independent follow-up analysis be performed. The architects' engineers' reports should be made available to the public as the community has a great stake in this matter. Only the most thorough review and analysis should be performed before any determination is made on the fate fate of this beautiful facade, a true neighborhood landmark in its own right. I want to add, we believe that keeping the facade allows a great opportunity to build a beautiful, innovative, contemporary building that serves the purposes of the congregation while the historic facade serving as a screen that interacts with the new building in a very dynamic, though appropriate, manner. And as the commissioner's report points out, it may be more expensive to demolish this facade than to retain it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much, Richard. We will be moving forward with Ellen Matlak. So Ellen, I am promoting you to panelist now. So if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Ellen. Good morning. I'm Ellen Matlak. I have been an East Village resident for forty-eight years since I first came as a student at the Cooper Union School of Art and Architecture. I became a member of Middle Church because I was inspired by the message of love, diversity, and inclusivity that seemed to be lacking in other congregations. Inspired by the work and community of Middle Church, I accepted a call to serve on the board. Following my time on the board, I accepted a staff position at Middle Church and will soon retire after more than ten years on staff. In my role on the board, my favorite part of new member meetings was hearing the stories of people who, like me, came to Middle along their own particular pathways. Each had a story to tell, but it seemed every story concluded, "That first Sunday, I felt like I fit right in." More than a building or inspiring music, Middle welcomes all people just as they are. In my role on staff, I studied the history of the church and the current site. I learned how in the eighteen nineties, the board of the collegiate church made a significant decision to remain in the East Village and continue to serve this community rather than relocate further uptown. I was very involved with our life safety renovations to the church house in two thousand and twelve. When I gave sanctuary tours to visitors, I loved mentioning the special details of the sanctuary, right down to the small, hand-painted Tiffany Studios label on one of the stained glass windows. And so when I received And so, when I received a phone call from a colleague at 5:30 a.m. on December 5th, 2020, summoning me to our church on fire, this was a very personal tragedy for me. We huddled together in the dark in the rain and watched Middle Church burn. As I saw flames leap behind the Middle Church steeple, the old rhyme came to mind. Here's the church, here's the steeple, open the doors and see all the people. Faced with that devastation, even in that moment, I had hope because I knew we were losing our building but not our people. The church is its people, its community, how they nurture, support, and love their neighbors. Independent experts agree that we cannot rebuild safely without removing the sanctuary facade. Keeping the facade would add an extreme financial burden and logistical challenge to the rebuilding process. Please consider the request to remove the damaged, unsafe sanctuary facade to allow Middle Church to rebuild in the East Village and continue to serve the people of this community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Ellen. And next up, we will have, we will be hearing from Carol Kostick. So Carol, I am going to be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please just unmute your line and state your name for the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Sorry. Can you hear me, Gregory?
Yes, we could hear you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. My name is Carol Kostick. I'm an East Village resident, a member of Village Preservation, and a member of Middle Collegiate Church, but these remarks are purely my own. I wept when I saw the ruins of our church building in December 2020. But a church is not a building. A church is a congregation that comes together for worship, education, service, and growth. A church is not a building, but we need our new building to start over so we can rebuild our congregation too. Despite the Herculean efforts of the church's leadership to keep us all connected through the twin traumas of COVID and the fire, I fear our local community risks straying. We need to rebuild and to start now. I received emails from Village Preservation and the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative asserting that the work of Middle Church and our architects and engineers over the past two years isn't sufficient, and we should now hire more professionals at the church's expense, of course, to study the issue more. This feels breathtakingly wrong-headed to me and would further injure the congregation after the body blows of COVID and homelessness, not to mention the financial burdens on a church of modest means that still needs to pay for the new building as well as our ongoing operations. I loved our old building, but it's gone. The congregation wants to rebuild at the site to continue our ministry and community in the East Village. Prioritizing shreds of stonework over the vitality of the congregation would be a grave mistake. Please approve Middle Church's request to complete demolition of our destroyed church building so we can thrive as a church. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Carol. And next, we will be hearing from Susan Davis. So Susan, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please just unmute your line and state your name for the record, you will have three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Susan Davis, also a longtime resident in the East Village Gramercy Park area in a landmark building built in eighteen seventy. I loved Middle Church. I got the emails like Carol was saying from Lower East Side in Village Preservation, and I'm outraged that they think after two years and these experts, that somehow there's more expertise that's needed. You know, it's like the people who live inside a community didn't care. Of course, we immediately took steps to do what we could to preserve the Liberty Bell. It's now in the New York Historical Society. We mobilized friends who are trustees on the National Trust for Historic Preservation. We reached out to sacred spaces. We did everything we could. We wanted to like pick up the shards of the Tiffany glass to make sure things were preserved. We loved our building. You know, it's not like it was on the top ten of New York City's or Manhattan's Gothic Revival structures. There are a lot of Gothic, Neo-Gothic, and other structures. What's important to the Lower East Side and to the East Village, as Richard Moses was saying, is that Middle remains a spiritual beacon. So y'all, there's no more money. We've given myself six-figure gifts. There is no more money to pay for this kind of elite preservation of a facade and not the heart and soul of what really matters. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Susan.
And I'm glad you're.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. So next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from Historic Districts Council. So Lucy, I'm promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you will have three minutes to speak.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine, speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HTC is excited to see Middle Collegiate Church rebuild and flourish at 112 Second Avenue for many years to come. As East Village neighbors, we are keenly aware of the toll the fire has taken on Middle Collegiate and the East Village community, but we find an application to demolish the church's facade to be inappropriate at this time. HTC feels clearing the site should be a last resort. We appreciate Madsen Consulting Engineering's independent assessment of the facade, which found the structure to be globally stable and recommended continued investigation into whether the facade can be further stabilized and remediated. We agree that continued investigation might allow some or all of this facade to be preserved, and we urge the LPC and applicant to follow through on the recommendations and work with an engineering firm with extensive preservation experience to further explore how this facade can be retained and incorporated into Middle Collegiate's plans. HTC also believes that any demolition should be accompanied by a proposed design for a new building on the site rather than leaving the site vacant for an unknown amount of time. We look forward to seeing Middle Collegiate's plans for a new church at 112 Second Avenue and hope that after further investigation, some part of the facade may be retained, restored, and incorporated into a new piece of architecture. We note that some of the most creative, modern ecclesiastical structures, such as Paul Rudolph's First Church in Boston, are built by salvaging and incorporating the remaining elements of fire-damaged churches. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lucy. Next, we will be hearing from Christina Conroy from BSNY. So Christina, I'll be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please just unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Coming, coming. Okay, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, our report was written before Eric Madsen's excellent report, and thank you for that. Now, while the fire at 112 Second Avenue extensively damaged the building, we cannot support the proposed demolition of its remaining facade and foundation. The interior may have been gutted, but the facade remains relatively intact from the tower with steeple to the large center windows. And surely, those elements deserve preservation instead of a wrecking ball. Furthermore, while some parts of the facade were destabilized due to the fire, that alone does not warrant the demolition of the whole structure, as those weakened and damaged elements could be reinforced and restored without the total loss of the building. Now, something similar could be said of the entrances, which do not comply with the current NYC code. Many landmarks face and resolve egress issues without tearing down the whole building. The building may no longer be occupiable in its current condition, but demolition cannot be justified by the architectural issues described in this presentation. Now, whether or not the hardship provisions of the landmark law is applicable to this situation, the questions of feasibility of and opportunities for restoration and reuse must be addressed with the level of investigation and analysis of a formal hardship application. Preservation-oriented professionals should be retained to inform this work. Such assessments should be undertaken before the appropriateness of demolition can be determined. And in addition, we urge the Commission to uphold its longstanding practice of not approving a demolition before approval is given for a replacement. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Christina. And next up, we'll be hearing from Andrew Berman. So Andrew, I will be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please state your name for the record and unmute your line, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you. Thank you.
Great. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm Andrew Berman, speaking on behalf of Village Preservation. We strongly support Middle Collegiate Church rebuilding at this location and want to aid those efforts in any way we can. At our annual meeting this year, we presented the church with an award to honor and call attention to their efforts to recover from the tragic fire of December 2020 and to begin anew at their historic Second Avenue location. We recognize the exceptionally challenging and complicated circumstances involved and believe there's an appropriate path forward which would allow the church to do what it needs while maintaining the integrity of the Landmarks Law and avoid premature and irreversible decisions about demolition or set precedents with damaging potential implications elsewhere. For that reason, we do not support the application before the Commission today. The application contends the historic landmark church facade is too far damaged to be reused and prevents any sort of work on the site. If a sound, independent evaluation came to this conclusion, that might warrant approval of the application. However, we understand the independent evaluation commissioned by the Commission did not corroborate this finding. And I'll note that the additional corroborating evaluation we have called for should not be paid for by the church, as some have inaccurately claimed, but by the Landmarks Preservation Commission, as was done in this case. If there were a danger to the public or an inability to maintain the facade safely, the Department of Buildings would make such an evaluation and order the structure down, as we have all too often seen them do. They have not done so in this case, and we understand that no one believes the facade currently poses an immediate danger of collapse. Finally, we recognize that maintaining the facade presents certain challenges for the church, very real ones, which its limited resources as well as to its limited resources and its need to fulfill its mission. That's why there's a hardship provision, which would allow the church to demonstrate that maintaining the facade is incompatible with fulfillment of its mission. That is not what this application is. In fact, as we understand it, the LPC would need to turn this application down in order to allow the church to pursue that hardship application and demonstrate why taking the facade down is necessary for its mission. That process and its requirements and format would be the appropriate forum to debate that case. I will say that we struggled mightily with this application. The church is exactly the kind of institution we wish to support and see flourish in our neighborhoods. However, we don't think we or the LPC can pick and choose who has to follow the law and who doesn't or whose word to believe as an article of faith, even with the best of intentions, and whose not to. The system takes into account all of these issues at play here. The applicant's claims could be independently corroborated. The immediate need to remove the facade could be decided as a safety matter by DOB. The church could demonstrate that maintaining the facade is incompatible with the fulfillment of their mission through a hardship case. These are reasonable bars to meet for such a consequential decision with far-reaching implications. We do not believe that bar has been met at this time. No matter the outcome, we sincerely hope the church can rebuild at this site. However, we neither believe that.
Andrew, I'm so sorry. You've gone over three minutes. If you could please wrap up.
Okay, I just want to say that we think that neither disapproving the application would prevent that nor would approving it guarantee rebuilding at the location, as there is not currently a rebuilding plan. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Andrew. Okay, and we will now be moving forward to Laura Sewell. So Laura, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please state your name for the record and unmute your line, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Sewell. I'm speaking on behalf of the East Village Community Coalition. I really appreciate Vicky Berg acknowledging that the fire was traumatic, not just for the congregation, but for the community. Just when we thought 2020 couldn't get any worse. It was devastating. There was incredible outpouring of support, both emotional and financial, from the community to the congregation. And so, this hearing honestly kind of came as a shock to me. I'm hearing from a lot of members of the congregation that they, you know, feel outraged that they would be questioned. But this is exactly why we have this transparent public process, so that everyone can reach a conclusion that we can stand behind, just as we stood together at the plaque dedication for the young men who lost their lives during gas explosion. We've heard today that the facade is stable, that it's still a thing of beauty when you pass it on Second Avenue. We've included it in video tours, even in its current condition, and it's it's something that I think should be, it should be looked at more closely. And I also, I second what we've heard about a hardship application being a different thing. That's not what we're hearing today. We're just hearing for a simple case of demolition without fully exploring any other options, even to reuse part of the existing structure. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, and that's why we can't support this today. And I hope that helps some of the the members of the congregation understand where we're coming from. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much, Laura. Okay. And next up, we'll be hearing from Assembly Member Harvey Epstein. So, Assembly Member, I'll be promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could just please state your name for the record and unmute your line, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Thank you for letting me take a few minutes to join you here. And I just, you know, I just want to, you know, all us remember what happened that night with the fire and how we felt like a huge loss in our community when Middle Church went up. And I don't think anyone feels this more than the people who are parishioners and at the church, as well as the leadership of the church. And so, they've been examining the facade since they cleared the site. They spent over four million dollars between experts and engineers. You know, their brick and limestone is deteriorating. They say, their engineers and architects, so I'm not either one, say that the site is unstable and it's unsafe to keep it standing. So, we have to trust that the church, through this public process, is doing what's right for the church and for the community. They had any, my understanding is they had every intention to be keeping the facade for the new sanctuary, but they can't do that. And I believe them, and we should believe them. They need to move forward. We want this church back. We want this community institution back. And while they didn't start the fire, they've been really a good community member and even operating in the temple where I, where my family goes, at East End Temple, where they're doing their services. What's really important is to bring this congregation back and this community back. And I think there's nothing more appropriate than to listen to our faith-based leaders at Middle Church and say, they've done the work and the stories, and I understand what people are saying about wanting to preserve it, and I totally hear that. But we have to trust our leaders here, folks. We have to trust that Middle Church knows what they're doing. They know what's best for their community, for the church building and the church community that they've known and loved for decades. So I want to, I hope everyone understands that while preservation is important, it doesn't come at the cost of our community. And I think we should allow them to go forward with a new building, knowing that they'll use whatever tactics they can to keep the original place in order and keep the original look in order. Again, trust Middle Church. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Assembly Member. And next up, we'll be hearing from John Blasco. So John, I'll be promoting you to panelist now. So if you could please state your name for the record and unmute your line, you'll have three minutes to speak. So John, if I'll be promoting you to panelist now. So if you could please state your name for the record and unmute your line, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. I'm John Blasko. I am born and raised in the Lower East Side, East Village area. Former district leader of the 74th Assembly District, and formerly worked for former council member Rosie Mendez and currently work as, with Assembly Member Harvey Epstein. I just want to echo everything that the Assembly Member said. Middle Collegiate Church has been a really amazing partner, institution, leader in our community. And it was really tragic to see what happened with this fire. They were one of our first responders when the Second Avenue explosion happened and took two lives from our community. And I think that the Assembly Member basically said everything that I would say. And I think Reverend Jackie and the entire congregation have really shown a great deal of dedication and commitment to our community. And I really hope that LPC moves forward with the proposals that Middle Church has, so that we can finally rebuild Middle Collegiate Church for so many people that are trying to go back to their safe haven, to their safe space. So I'll end it, I'll end it short there. I really respect everyone's values and opinions in this conversation, but we really need to prioritize rebuilding Middle Church. So thank you so much, LPC.
Thank you so much, John. And next up, we'll be hearing from Anthony Donovan. So Anthony, I'll be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please just state your name for the record and unmute your line, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we could hear you. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you very much, all LPC and our local preservation, HTC. Everyone for caring about this, this facade. I too care about this facade. I'm five generations in this area. My great-great-grandfather, grandparents were married just down the block at St. Brigg's. This, this church is, is living preservation. It is one of our great examples of, it is one of our great preservationists. Landmarks Commission, please understand that. For 15 years, they have been joining with their local rabbi, their local imam, their Catholic priests, their local Hindu, their local Sufi groups. We've been meeting all through these years to help stand up to hatred, to stand up to, to, to the best of New York City. This, this congregation lives the best of New York City. If the preservationists and of who I consider the, the the organizations that call themselves preservationists, I do admire your work and I thank you for that work. But put up the millions of dollars for the studies for any, if you want to keep that facade, you put up the millions of dollars, write it down and commit to doing that, to help Middle do that. They want to keep parts of the facade, as I know, in their new building. They, they respect that building much more and know it much more than any of us. So, and I, from what I've heard, they try to keep parts of the tower as part of their new rebuilding, whatever they can salvage to remind the, the people that passed by of, of this, what it was. But they are living history, and they want to continue living history, and I want them to continue. They've been invaluable part to our community. So that is what I need to preserve, what is behind the facades. And we would love to, but as, as been said here, and thank you, Harvey, trust, trust, they've done the work. But if you think otherwise, put up the money, the millions of dollars in writing for the further studies and commit to what the cost will be. It'll be a tremendous amount of money. We'll lose this. No congregation can stand this kind of a cost. So, thank you. And I, you know, the, the fire was not started there. It was started with a tremendous amount of irresponsibility, negligence, malfeasance right next door, which is not being addressed. And that, if you want to go after someone, go after, maybe that property can be given to the church and, and people that really serve this community. So anyway, thank you. Thank you very much for your consideration. I do trust the architects that say this is extremely huge project to preserve. God bless. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Anthony. And next up, we'll be hearing from Andreej Dobryansky. So Andreej, I will be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Andreej Dobryansky. I'm the vice chair of the United Ukrainian-American Organizations of New York and have been in that position, elected repeatedly since 2010. When talking about Middle Church, which is an anchor for the entire community, it has certainly been a home to many of our community for many decades, not just, not just as a place to visit, but definitely a welcoming congregation and a space. As the Reverend Dr. Jack Lewis mentioned on 9/11, specifically, people to this day talk about how welcoming that church was. We represent a community that centers most of the national organizations of Ukrainian descent here in the United States, all centered in the neighborhood. Specifically, I'm on the parish council of St. George's Church, which has about 1,500 parishioners every Sunday, as well as daily masses. We have in our community survivors of genocide, survivors of repression, people who are here, not just from decades past, but newly arrived victims of repression who seek refuge in the United States. To this day, I cannot give them an explanation why that wonderful home that welcomed our community as guests and as some members of the congregation, why it hasn't been rebuilt. We support the initiative of Middle Church to rebuild in whatever fashion they see fit. And we simply want to focus, as the good Assembly Member, as many people on this call have said already, focus on the community. The, there is no building. We are talking about a wall, and I cannot explain to my community after this meeting why some of the striking images that we saw in the engineering report by Middle Church, why what we see as a potential hazard still scares members of my community walking past it. So I do appreciate the work of the commission, and I hope that you see fit to allow Middle to rebuild, focusing on the people, focusing on the congregation going forward. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much, Andree. And next up, we'll be hearing from Emily Hollenbeck. So Emily, I will be promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please just state your name for the record and unmute your line, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you, first of all, everyone, for being here and for having us, and I do appreciate the time of everyone here. So my name's Dr. Emily Hollenbeck. I am a psychologist and am a member of the congregation at Middle Church. And this discussion's been really interesting, but one thing I keep coming back to mentally is this idea. I think, excuse me, Mr. Moses even said that there's a spirituality associated with the facade. And I think that's really interesting, because I don't really believe that the spirituality or the value of the congregation or the church as an entity lives within each individual limestone. Right? So I'm beginning to question, you know, for our congregation, if we are forced to choose, which as a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization, we're not a corporation, we don't have millions and millions of dollars to spend. We're forced to choose how to exist in the Lower East Side and how to continue taking care of our neighbors and ourselves. Are we going to divert these funds to further going down what it sounds like may be a rabbit hole? As an aside, I know Dr. Jackie Lewis has been working two jobs, like her full-time job, and trying diligently, but really full force effort to figure this out. So she deserves all the credit for that. But in thinking about our congregation, to be more personal, I'm a queer woman. I am a proud member of the LGBTQ community, and I have never felt welcome in a church, ever. I've actually been told to leave. So with the rise in hate crimes against people of our community, this church is a literal sanctuary and having that physical structure where people can come and be part of our congregation, part of the community. I mean, talk about LPC's role in, you know, making sure that tourism and, and, you know, appreciation of the city is alive and well. Think about the queer community in the Lower East Side. Is the stonewall in important because of its stones or because of what happened there? This is about Middle and its congregants and queer people like me. The movement that Middle is taking part of in progressive Christianity is truly unique and valuable. And I personally believe that that alone, in our congregation, in our messaging, in our preaching, in our work, that is unique to the Lower East Side, and that's what makes it special, not our bricks. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Emily. And next up, we'll be hearing from Tom Smucker. So Tom, I will be promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please state your name for the record and unmute your line, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we could.
Hi, I'm Tom Smucker. I moved to the East Village in 1967. My wife and I have lived in our apartment on 12th Street and Second Avenue since 1976. And I've been a member of Middle Church for 36 years and currently serve as an elder. I'm also a retired Verizon technician and serve as the president of the CWA Local 1101 Retired Members Council. Every day when I walk out of our apartment, I appreciate the history and heritage, including the architectural heritage of my neighborhood, especially right across the street, the Village Cinema, which, you know, was part of the, the great Yiddish Theater District. And we believe people in, in our apartment building, actually, that some of the stars of that era can be traced to it, having lived in our building. So the history of the neighborhood is very important to me. I also remember the little girls around the corner on 13th Street that were killed when the stairwell into their apartment building many years ago collapsed and crushed them to death. And as a phone company guy, I worked in the 13th Street Central Office when that building caught on fire in the early 70s. So I appreciate the buildings that have been protected and maintained in our neighborhood. It's very important to me. Also know there are buildings that become too dangerous and need to be rebuilt. And safety is always a concern to people that have to work in dangerous conditions. It's no longer safe to rebuild Middle with the facade. And I appreciate people's anxieties about that, but it's really important to me and my family that Middle begin to get rebuilt now in its historic site, five blocks down from my apartment building. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Tom. We will now be hearing from Natalie Runyon. So Natalie, I will be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm not sure why my video, oh, there it is. Hi, everyone. My name is Natalie Runyon. I am a member of Middle Church. I also serve on the board, and I am of Middle Church's board, and I have been on the board, and this is my fifth year. I wanted to, I'm here to ask for your support in allowing Middle to take down the facade so that we could rebuild our, our, our spiritual home. You heard Jackie at the beginning say, you know, that this is a choice between a facade and a church. And I want to say that, reframe it a little bit, that this is a decision between a facade and the people of the East Village and of the community. That's how I see it. I've been a Middle Church member for over 15 years. I have a almost 13-year-old and nine-year-old who have been, who were baptized in that building. I live around the corner on Sixth Street between First and Second Avenue. I've been here for, I've lived in, in, in the East Village for 20 years. The, the, the Middle Church is, is a, is, I can't even communicate how important it is as, as a spiritual home. Yes, the facade is, and the building itself was a beautiful sanctuary, but what went on in those four walls was truly magical. Because on any given day, you would see people with all skin tones. You would see people from who, from all LGBT identities, you would see, you know, straight, white, cisgendered people showing up, building community together as a spiritual and faith community. One of my favorite memories was a, was a playdate that we would have among different, an interfaith playdate with a local Buddhist or Hindu temple, the imam down on First Avenue and the mosque down on 13th Street and First Avenue, along with some other faith communities in the neighborhood. My children got to be part of those regular playdates. And they were started by Middle Church in response to, in, at an interfaith community meeting, the imam, I believe, at the mosque communicating that the children of that mosque felt unsafe. And so we wanted to build community for them, through that, through that regular playdate. That can't happen now, as well as many other ways that we, that we worship together and built community in the neighborhood happen now. Here are the facts. We spent $4.2 million on, on trying to preserve the facade. We don't have access to rebuild on-site, because we have a difficult neighbor who won't grant us access to the site to do any more work, to, to, to remove the rubble. We have raised, we had a goal of raising multimillion dollars. And there is just no more money available to do additional assessments to establish and, and see what can be done to save the facade. In addition, we've already heard that it's unsafe.
Natalie, I'm terribly sorry. The three minutes are passed. If we could please wrap up the statement.
So I just wanted to say, we've already heard it's unsafe. As a moral and ethical person of faith, I'm not sure that I could put another person in harm's way. And so again, this, this decision comes down for a facade are the, the people of the East Village, including our congregation, and I urge you to make the choice for the people. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Natalie. And next up, we'll be hearing from Amanda Hambrick Ashcraft. Amanda, I will be promoting you to panelist right now. So if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Amanda Hambrick Ashcraft. My husband, four children, and I have lived in the East Village since 2009. I'm speaking to you today as a PTA parent who sends her children to Children's Workshop and SWEF NB, and as an active community member in the East Village. I've also been a minister on staff at Middle Church since 2018. My family and I first found Middle because of its specific location at 112 Second Avenue. Walking from the F train, her doors wide open, almost beckoning the people in from the avenue. As we all have agreed upon today, a progressive, art-centric, spiritual hub for connection and justice is crucial in such a visible location in our beloved East Village. Space and place matter. In my role at minister, I received the call early in the morning on December 5. "There is a confirmed fire at 112 Second Avenue," the caller said, over and over again. I'll never forget running down the street like a horror movie in the dark and in the rain, to come upon the orange flames that overtook our beautiful building. I stood along with countless members of the FDNY in shock, watching the flames I stood along with countless members of the FDNY in shock, watching the flames pour out of the Tiffany windows down the sides and onto the street. My heart broke that morning as one of the first members of the community to see the tarnished facade, the building in flames, and my resolve there to restore what we could of the building was uniquely high. I, along with Jack Lee and our entire professional team, have worked tirelessly these past two years to do everything we can to keep what we can of our beloved building. You've seen the report and you may have been present the day that we gladly saved the Liberty Bell from the tower. We've done all of this to the, quite honestly, shameful amount of four point two million dollars. I wanted more than anyone else to be able to keep the entire facade, but because of what is before us, I do not see how this is possible. And so it's time to future think. And I want to pause here and relocate us just a little bit back. Think back to December twenty twenty. We were in what we didn't know was still the early stages of a global pandemic, one that disproportionately kills black and brown people, immune compromised elderly, low income and poor people. Those aren't just labels. They describe the majority of the Middle Church congregation. This was pre-vaccine. Our stress and our grief were high. We were just months from one of the most significant racial uprisings in our country. We are in a post-George Floyd moment. Black people were and are exhausted and traumatized from ongoing racial violence, both systemically and individually. Black people, not unlike the senior minister of this church, our Reverend Dr. Jackie Lewis. It is immoral for us to have a conversation about what to do next without claiming that we have been led and must continue to listen to the wisdom of a black woman, our senior minister, who just happens to be the first woman and woman of color of all of the collegiate churches, the oldest congregation in our country dating back to sixteen twenty-eight. What does it say about us if in this moment, not exempt from ongoing racial violence, gender violence, and the tight tentacles of white supremacy, combined with the patriarchy, that we might vote against the wisdom of Jackie Lewis and her team? We have an invitation, an opportunity to listen to the prophetic, prayerful, professional wisdom before us. We cannot wait another minute to rebuild. We cannot spend another dollar stabilizing, measuring and preserving stones. We have spent the immoral amount of four point two million already to do just this. Imagine how many people we could have fed, we could have housed, after school programs, we could have opened, recovery programs held, movements built with that money, which will only be higher if we continue to evaluate and install.
Amanda, Amanda, I'm sorry, uh, the three minutes have passed. If we could, uh, please wrap it up. I'm sorry.
Neighbors and co-laborers in this specific moment, let's let the mere stones of the facade be not a dividing wall between what has been and what can be. A community center for radical possibility, community programs, spiritual bomb, and the prophetic leadership of Reverend Dr. Jackie Lewis. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Amanda. We will now be moving over to Erica Hunt. So Erica, if you are still around, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. I want to thank the, um, the members of the LPC and, uh, and all who are attending. And I'm just going to read a very brief, uh, statement. I'm writing to express my full, I'm, I'm here to express my full-hearted support of Middle Church's rebuilding plan. And as has been said, the church is a major community center for the East Village and serves many populations, not just those in the pews, but obviously those who live with us and are our neighbors.
And I'm terribly sorry. If you could just, uh, state your name for the record, please.
Oh, sure. Okay. My name is Erica Hunt and, um, I was a resident of the East Village for thirty-five years and a member of Middle Collegiate Church, uh, for something like twenty-eight years, as well as a, a, a past deacon. And I'm, I'm, I'm stating here again, my support for Middle Church's rebuilding plan. Uh, the church is a major community center, as has been mentioned, not just for people in the pews, but also for, as a neighbor, um, serving survivors, uh, recover, people in recovery, the hungry LGBT community, Asian and Latino Americans, Jews, Muslims, atheists, who use the services, vital services, find affirmation and renewal. Um, and middle has continued to serve despite the devastating fire. Um, and our resources are stretched, stretched to do all that is within our mission, which is to serve people and to be a spiritual home. So I think let's not get hypnotized by the edifice. Um, and get the, you know, we used to call it the edifice complex, rather that thinking really about what happens inside a place like Middle Church, which we are sorely in need of, especially during urgent times like these. I hope that the LPC will consider these testimonies as relevant, as relevant as preservation. There is also the preservation of East Village community and spirit. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Erica. Okay. And we will now be moving to Ivan Anderson. So Ivan, I will be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please state your name for the record and unmute your line, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Uh, hello, I am Ivan Anderson. I am a member of Middle Collegiate Church. I also serve on the consis history. Um, I've been, uh, a member for a number of years. Uh, look, I think one of the things, um, that uh, it, we, we all, I think, share is, is a love for, you know, the architecture and the, the building as it was. Uh, but the reality is, it, it's not what it used to be. Um, and I, I really, you know, besides the actual personal trauma of our, you know, our church burning down during a pandemic, uh, unfortunately had, uh, I've lost a family member of my grandmother in a, in a house fire a number of years ago. And so, you know, there, there are echoes of feelings I feel about sort of that experience versus this one. I think the thing that, that resonates the most with me is at some point, like my grandfather had to make a very difficult decision to say, you know, the, 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 the fire has done too much damage to your grandmother's body. Like she, we have to let her go. She was on life support. We had to let her go. And I look and I, I hear respectfully, I'm not an engineer, but I, I hear people looking at the pictures I'm looking at and saying the building is stable. Um, you know, we should pour more money into looking at how to save burned bricks and, and broken cracked limestone. And I look and say, that is a building on life support. There are beams that are supporting it. We don't know, um, you know, the, the, the fact that there are, there are, there are protective scaffolding around the building to ensure that no, no one is injured. And frankly, the sidewalk is not open, right? Because there's, there's a risk of possibility. And we've heard from our experts that, that it is unsafe. Um, and so I really want to just urge and respectfully ask this commission to allow us to be the spiritual beacon, uh, as, as, uh, Mr. Rose has mentioned earlier today, uh, by rebuilding on the site and reimagining what, what, you know, just love looks like, uh, on Second Avenue in, in the East Village. I'm, I'm a gay black man who found uh, the, uh, the church, much like Amanda. Uh, I, uh, took the F train over from Brooklyn one day and was walking up the street and it's like, day one, this is, this is my community. I want to be here and I, and I haven't left. And it's important that, that work continues in the East Village where we can be a part of a really rich tapestry of history of multi-ethnic, multiracial, multi-faith community. And so I respectfully ask that this building that is damaged beyond repair, let us take its off-life support and begin to imagine what a resurrection, a revival can look like on Second Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Ivan. And next up, we'll be hearing from Mackie Alston. So Mackie, I will be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the public record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mackie Alston. I've worked with Reverend Dr. Jackie Lewis, the staff and team at Middle for over fifteen years in my former role as Senior Vice President at Auburn Seminary. Middle has convened the Multi-Faith Movement for Justice year in and year out at Middle's Revolutionary Love Conference, a program designed to sustain the movement and also find a way forward for love and justice in the world. While the congregation has always provided unparalleled hospitality, the facility, the building was not designed for the transformative role middle is now playing in religious life in the twenty-first century, in the arts communities that help us imagine a healed world and the justice movements that will get us there. We need middle. We ought to let middle decide for itself what the ideal facility is to meet its critical mission in this city and beyond. Middle has gone through hell, from the fire just before Christmas to all it has taken to emerge as a radically inclusive, truly multiracial community. Middle is the phoenix that emerged from the fire, the literal fire, but also the fire of forging community for thousands and a meeting place for the multi-faith movement for justice across all kinds of difference. Middle and its programs, such as the Revolutionary Love Conference, offer a space with room for all across race, gender identity and sexual orientation, faith tradition and belief, ability, immigration status, to come together to imagine the world for which we long and bring it into being. If middle has the facility it needs to truly spread its wings, the sky is the limit for the arts, justice and healing it can provide to New Yorkers and to people all over the world. Y'all, this is not just a story about loss. It can also be a story about radical imagination, about what's possible for our collective future. Middle Church deserves to design the building it needs to best serve its purpose, to bring justice, arts and spiritual well-being to this city and beyond for generations to come. Let middle decide what is right for middle. I guarantee we will all benefit. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Mackie. And we will now be hearing from Ben Perry. So Ben, I will be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please state your name for the public record and unmute your line, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Reverend Benjamin Perry and I'm one of the ministers at Middle Church. Thank you so much to the commission for meeting with us today. I just want to offer a brief word about queer people and sacred space. In a world filled with homophobia and violence, where so many LGBTQI people are cast out of religious communities, I can't tell you what middle means to people like me. Middle's fierce love and proclaiming the sacredness of queer people is not new. In the eighties and nineties, during the worst of the AIDS crisis, when so many churches wouldn't visit people to offer care as they lay dying, they wouldn't even hold funerals. This is the church that threw wide its doors. We started a free feeding program and until the fire was still running, and the Darius Johnson Gospel Choir to give people hope, named for a man who himself would die from AIDS, but who birthed such beauty while he lived. A facade did not do that work. A community did. I'm talking about that work because I want you to know just how much that building meant to me. But the people who live and love inside of it mean more. And I'm talking about our desire to rebuild on the site because place matters, particularly for folks who have been told again and again, you don't belong here. Second Avenue and Seventh Street is their home. It's our home. And if this commission decides we must leave the facade standing, I'm going to have to look folk in the eyes and tell them that we can't rebuild, that we need to find a new home. It's one thing to lose the building you love in a fire and rebuild. It's another to lose that hallowed ground forever. So please, grant our petition. This archway is broken. It is falling down. It is dangerous. And it's simply beyond any appropriate means for repair. Let us build something vibrant from the ashes. Let us continue serving this community. Make your vote part of our resurrection. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ben. And we will now be hearing from, or, uh, I believe, let me see, Bob Tierney. So Bob, I will be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay.
Hello, Bob.
Yeah, I'm, I did everything I think I needed to do. Let's see. I unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you. Thank you.
But you can't see me, right?
No, you can't see it.
Doesn't matter, just as well. Uh, I know the three-minute rule and I'll get through it quickly. It's an amazing hearing and I'm proud to be a part of it. Um, Bob Tierney had the honor and privilege of chairing this commission, uh, now almost a decade ago, believe it or not. I'm testifying for only the third time since then because of the significance of the church in the cultural history of the historic district and its continued importance to the community and the city. In my view, the church should not be required to retain severely damaged elements that no longer have a relationship to the building or the district for which they were originally designed. Uh, any request like this to remove original material should be, should receive careful scrutiny. And clearly this is receiving that scrutiny, both from the reports that we've heard and from the, the testimony that's been coming forth. So that scrutiny includes context and, and that's because basically the landmarks law, what it really seeks to do is to preserve the features that contribute to the understanding of the past, not simply the preservation of isolated building materials, simply because they are original. And here, the sanctuary, which played a role in the immigrant experience underlying the district's creation and for which the architectural features were designed, has ceased to exist. It's gone. It's burned to the ground. Uh, important, in addition, important ornamental features, stained glass windows, bronze doors, limestone crosses, finials, dormers, et cetera, have been destroyed or deformed beyond recognition. And beyond that, according to the commission's engineer, the base of the gable has to be removed to bring in construction equipment. So we've heard this and repair, reuse of the front-facing limestone would require chopping out sections. So all that damage means to me that insisting that what would be left remain in place or be reinstalled will only result in an inappropriate recreation. It would be the preservation of a ruin. And there are two or three specifically preserved ruins in this city, and this is not a ruin and is not to be preserved at a ruin. It's a vibrant living congregation and church with the charismatic leadership of Reverend Lewis, and we've seen that all today. And someone said we should trust her. I fully concur, we should trust her. And she's, and that trust has been verified in this hearing, in my opinion. So that's basically, uh, where I come out and where does this now leave us, meaning you, the commission? Uh, this church is stymied from moving, uh, beyond the programmatic concept of rebuilding because designing a new building requires safe access to get a realistic estimate of site preparation costs in order to determine what they, what can be built here. So in conclusion, to allow for the church to rebuild and contribute, continue to contribute to the vitality of the district and carry out its mission, to have the opportunity to prepare a design to do so, the appropriate step to take at this time is to grant that up is the application before you, and I respectfully urge the commission to do so. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much, Bob. Next, we will be hearing from Reverend Fred Davy. So Reverend, I will be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, Reverend?
Yes, thank you. And I see my cameras. Let's see if I can do this. Thank you and thank you commissioners. My name is Reverend Frederick Davy. I am Senior Strategic Advisor to the President of Union Theological Seminary in the City of New York, where I, where I was, Executive Vice President for more than a decade. I've worked with faith communities in a variety of contexts and spaces for the forty years I've lived in New York City, including as Deputy President of Manhattan, Chair of the Civilian Complaint Review Board, and a Commissioner on the New York City's Racial Justice Commission. Middle Church stands out in bold relief in its importance to New York City. So I'm here this morning, or now I guess it's this afternoon, to support Middle Church's proposal to remove its severely damaged facade, which would allow the church to move forward, to continue to be a beacon of light and hope, and to move forward with rebuilding and being the significant faith community this city and nation so desperately needs. As Reverend Dr. Jackie Lewis has noted, millions of dollars that could have been used to feed the hungry, address the needs of the homeless and destitute, have already been spent to research restoration of the facade. I beg you today, please do not force this church to spend millions more to attempt to attempt to restore a set of historic stones at the expense of the contributions this faith community can make in the spiritual and physical lives of so many. The church is so much more than a building. That said, the church is committed to rebuilding in a manner that will be aesthetically pleasing to the community, but won't divert precious and sacred resources to old bricks and mortar, beautiful as it once was. This money can now be best used for higher and lofty loftier causes. And I ask this commission to give this church the opportunity, the opportunity to do what it's been called to do, and that is to be a true faith community to the least, the lost, the left out and the marginalized in this great city of ours. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much, Reverend. We will now be hearing from Lynn Pentecost. So Lynn, I'll be promoting you to panelists now. So if you could please unmute your line and un, uh, state your name for the public record, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Can you hear me now, Gregory?
Hi Lynn, yes, we could hear you.
All right, let me see if I can find my uh, my image. I don't know. Let me just move on. Okay, um, Lynn Pentecost. I have been a member of Middle Collegiate Church for over forty years, almost half a century. My children were baptized at Middle. Uh, services for many of my church friends who died of AIDS were held at Middle. The first home of the organization that I founded, the Lower East Side Girls Club, was in Middle Church. Since my childhood, the Dutch Reformed Church has been a major part of my social and spiritual life. Yet I am not Dutch. My family were not original colonizers, far from it. My father was born in the Bronx. My mother was born in Canada and brought to the Lower East Side at the age of two. Their parents were immigrants from Russia and Austria. I joined and became active in Middle Church because of my family's long-held human values to be part of a multicultural, multi-ethnic, multiracial and caring community. These values are not reflected in the stone which forms the facade we are talking about today, just as they were not reflected in the historic and as it turned out highly flammable structure we lost two years ago. That stone is not sacred. Our community is. Excuse me. As someone uh, as someone, uh, I attended, let me get back to my notes. I attended a school of art and architecture, the Cooper Union, and have worked with architects over the years. I know the value of symbols, as does Middle Church where we housed and rang the Liberty Bell for years. But as a longtime active community resident, I also have a good sense of what our community needs are. And at this moment in time, we need to rebuild in New York City, in the East Village, as quickly as possible. And so I asked the Landmarks Preservation Commission to consider ways in which we might compromise on this issue. Can we remove the facade, the doorway arch and towers in order to rebuild and work with our architects, engineers and you to design a building that reflects our history and yet builds for the future? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lynn. And we will now be hearing from Jorge Fontanaz. So Jorge, I will be promoting you to panelists now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. I hope you can hear me and me. Uh, can you confirm?
Yes, I can hear and see you.
Great. Um, members of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, my name is Jorge Fontanaz. And uh, I have, uh, along with my husband Maurice Russell, our longtime residents of the East Village, Lower East Side. We've been together for twenty years and have been members of Middle Collegiate Church for just as long. We were married there in 2013. We strongly support the Middle Church petition and we are ready to rebuild. What some have not yet said, and I echo a lot of the words that have been shared so far today, especially from our congregation, is that Middle Collegiate Church is a frontline institution serving our community. There's a lot of expertise in today's hearing and herein is an opportunity for you to listen to the community expertise that informs our position as well as in support of our pastor, that of our pastor, Reverend Dr. Jackie Lewis. What the church has done and must continue to do is urgent in order to continue its work and to advance its mission. You've heard Middle Church described as a spiritual beacon, as a refuge. You may not have heard yet how it nurtures love for many who are overlooked and underestimated with deep connections to the neighborhood, how it serves its youth, how it's an economic engine of the neighborhood, how we feed the homeless and the lonely. Middle Church is more than just a physical building. It is a community that has built a movement for justice and equality. We are recognized locally, nationally and globally as one of the most diverse multicultural, multi-faith, multi-generational churches that are actively working to dismantle white supremacy and injustices. Today, we are witnesses to what power looks like. We are dismantling systems that oppress the voices of the people. We are repatriating land to the Lenape people and repairing our own relationship to the land itself. No one entity gets to decide the future of our church. This is a community-centered project and the community has spoken. The longer that Middle remains inoperable, inactive and in limbo, the more we all lose. We've talked about the immoral investments already spent of over four million dollars. Others have also also already asked you to imagine uh, what's possible with those funds. Having to fund the preservation of a wall costs our community deeply in so many ways that offer healing, support and life-saving services. Butterfly meals for the homeless in Tompkins Square Park, our young adults group, our youth and children programming, our men's group, Deconstructing Masculinity, Bible studies, prayer circles, acting classes, creative writing, ukulele acts, Hablamos, our Spanish language club, Queer Connection, our queer black men's group, New Adventures for Career Support, our voter reform group, our Village Chorus for Children and the Youth, our Care Givers Circle. Please know that I understand the symbols like our church structure hold value. The facade of the church holds meaning and priceless value. My husband and I were married in that church ten years ago. Our wedding photo at the front of the steps is part of history and we will grieve the loss of the facade in the same way we mourn the loss of the sanctuary. The facade of Middle Church is glorious to look at and it is a distinctive structure on Second Avenue. I walked there this morning and admired the facade and something was missing. Not the sanctuary, but the church. The people and the community that Middle calls home are missing and we are anxious to return home, to walk through the doors again without attachment to the doors that once stood there. I'll wrap up by saying that the experts have already weighed in. The facade is not safe. What's more important is the facade or a space for our congregation and community to be together and continue to our work. Be there, a space for the congregation to continue its support of the community. We value church over building. We value community over architecture. We are the church. We are the community. We oppose keeping us from rebuilding in the way that we see fit for our church and our community. Please approve the Middle Church proposal and thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Jorge. Uh, next up, we will be hearing from Lawrence Swan. So Lawrence, uh, if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, I'm promoting you to panelists now.
Hi. I don't see myself, but I trust you see me.
Yes, we could see and hear you.
I'm a member of Middle Church. When I first experienced Middle Church, I was impressed by its congregation. It's like its choir brings together the ethnic and cultural diversity of East Village residents and natives in one space. Or did. In this space on the corner of Second Avenue and Seventh, we gathered to create, celebrate and practice community. In the weeks after the fire, I took many photos of the facade. It was a picturesque ru- ruin. I hope that pieces of the facade will be incorporated in the new building, but now our broken facade is only in a very expensive and inadequate tombstone for something that is not at all dead. Middle is a true living community church and center for activism and service. Middle is not a historical marker, but a history maker. The past two years, we've been unhoused, but we've uh, continued to grow and to meet virtually and in borrowed spaces. Uh, but we need a home to meet. Let's take down the facade and get real. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Lawrence. And next up, we will be hearing from Michael Livingston. So Michael, I'll be promoting you to panelists now. So if you could please unmute your line and then state your name for the public record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Great. Glad to be with you. Thank you so much for this opportunity. This has been fascinating. I am Michael Livingston, Reverend Michael Livingston. I am the recently retired interim senior minister of the Riverside Church in the city of New York. So I'm entirely appreciative of beautiful structures, uh, churches that um, reflect uh, magnificence and awesomeness as they speak to the life of uh, both vibrant architect, architecture and uh, and community uh, life within. I cannot imagine how I would feel or members of Riverside if that magnificent structure were harmed in a fire. I don't have to imagine that sadly in the case of Middle Collegiate Church. It burned in the fire and it's time to move on. I completely support the desire of the Riverside Church, its leadership, its membership, many members of the community to move forward. It's been two years already now that bears repeating and there is no home for this church and its desperately vital meaning to not just Lower Manhattan, but to the city of New York and beyond. Riverside, we were partners with Middle Collegiate Church in many, many occasions. I've preached there. I've been there as a participant and other programming. It is time for this congregation to be returned to its home and for rebuilding to begin. And I, as others have said, trust completely in the creativity and the inventiveness and the commitment to both the past and the future that I know we will see embodied in the rebuilding that will take place there. I can only imagine usefulness in, at this point, reconciling the Madsen Report and the work that the experts that the church engaged uh, to determine the safety of moving forward with rebuilding there. Anything beyond that would be an unnecessary burden on the people of uh, Middle Collegiate Church. I support their effort to demolish um, what used to be and move forward with what can be. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Michael. And we will now be hearing from Joanne Kennedy. So Joanne, I will be promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the public record, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joanne. Can you hear me? We good?
Yes, we can.
So I'm actually not a member of Middle Collegiate Church and I say that not to distance myself from Middle Collegiate, but to say that I live in the neighborhood and this is very important to me to have this discussion today. And I want to take a couple of seconds of my three minutes to recognize that we live in an amazing city where we can have this challenging discussion where we can talk about these issues and I'm appreciative for that. Maybe because it's Thanksgiving and I'm full of the gratitude. I appreciate this serious conversation. Um, and I appreciate the work of the LPC, even though um, a lot of times I don't always agree, but because I, I work at the Catholic Worker and we definitely spend our time prioritizing people above all things. Um, but I still appreciate the hard work of all the people here today, especially you Gregory, doing all this work. So I guess I just have a couple of thoughts to add to the plate of the LPC when they consider this decision. I'm not an expert. I don't know about safety, but I have heard everybody say that the space is not safe right now, which is ironic because Middle was famous for being a safe space. And we need to do what we can do to make it safe as soon as possible. And it seems like the way to do that is to allow them to tear it down. I don't know a community that would be more respectful of the desire for historic preservation than Middle Collegiate. And that's not just because of Jackie's amazingness. It's that whole community's commitment to that. Um, and I think that, you know, I was a parishioner at Nativity, which is further down Second Avenue, to give a sense of the neighborhood. That beautiful brutalist structure which nobody valued, which was torn down to build luxury housing. And that's not what Middle's doing. Middle is building a church. They're not going to make a gazillion dollars and forcing them to rehabilitate that facade amounts to being an unfunded mandate that creates a burden that will get in the way of their ability to serve our community. And their job in this community is way too important for us to lose them because of that kind of onerous burden. I thank you for your work. I thank everybody for their time. It's been a privilege to be here and listen to everybody today. And I hope everybody stays safe and that we move forward with Middle. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Joanne. Next up, we will be hearing from a uh, call-in uh, for the two-one-two number. So if that is you, uh, please, I am uh, promoting you to panelists now. Oh, it doesn't seem as though I could. Okay, we seem to have difficulties with the call-in number, so.
Right, Gregory, you just say allowed to talk.
Oh, allowed to talk?
Yep.
Okay, so I will be allowing you to speak right now. Uh, if you are the two-one-two number, please, I will be.
Hello?
Yes.
Good afternoon. I am Theodore Grunwald. The total loss of Middle Collegiate's eighteen ninety-two interiors presents a remarkable opportunity for the congregation to create a relatively inexpensive, yet artistically adventurous and visually stunning contemporary worship and care space of timber, glass and steel behind its contrasting historic stone facade. Like Coventry Cathedral, which was firebombed by the Nazis in World War Two and sensitively and inspirationally resurrected between nineteen fifty-six and sixty-two, preservation of still-standing outer stone walls linking the past and the future is also essential here on Lower Second Avenue, where Middle Collegiate's towering stone exterior, a vital part of the streetscape of the East Village Lower East Side Historic District, links the congregation to the city and to its history. Since nineteen seventy-eight, six of Manhattan's historic religious buildings have been gutted by fire and uh, a- a- and or endangered by structural collapse. All six of these places of worship have been fully restored, with the exception of Saint Savvas, which has just been re-roofed and awaits phase two of its rebuilding, but all of them have retained and repaired their original badly damaged outer walls and towers, which still stand intact today as direct links to their histories and to the streetscapes and communities that they embody. Uh, they are, beginning in nineteen seventy-eight, uh, Saint Mark's in the Bowery, Saint Luke's in the Fields, Central Synagogue, Saint Bridget's, the North Transsept of the Cathedral, Saint John the Divine, and Saint Savva in two thousand and sixteen. Middle Church deserves nothing less but the very best architecture and expertise. Forty-one years ago, when I was employed by Hardy Holzman Pfeiffer as office boy, I hand-delivered the attached letter from Hugh Hardy to the rector of Saint Luke's I hand-delivered the attached letter from Hugh Hardy to the rector of St. Luke's in the Fields on the Monday morning following the devastating fire Friday night that left St. Luke's a gutted shell with unstable, fire-scorched walls and tower, which many claimed would topple. "The walls could not be more important," Hugh wrote, "no matter who says they are unsafe." For reasons both practical and symbolic, the walls must be preserved. They are the physical connection with the past, and no form of new construction could replace them. Masonry is quite flexible. It can bulge and crack without being insecure." According to the senior minister of Middle Collegiate, the church spent more than $4 million to stabilize the facade and see what could be done. To now abandon this effort is a really terrible waste of $4 million, especially since expert historic preservation architects and engineers routinely stabilize and restore buildings in far worse condition. Today's application to demolish, unaccompanied by any new plan or design to rebuild the building and replace its facade, is unprecedented in commission history. Commissioners cannot adequately assess the design excellence and appropriateness of this application in the historic district in the absence of a design. Complete erasure irrevocably removes that option. There is no evidence that the facade of a non-existent replacement structure will be any more appropriate.
I'm terribly sorry, but you've exceeded the three minutes. So if you could please wrap up your statement, I'm sorry.
Okay, I will. I will read the last sentence. In the complete absence of any definitive information about the church's rebuilding plans or any replacement structure whatsoever, the administration of Middle Church is asking the commission to take on quite a lot on faith. Therefore, the application before today's commission should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Theodore. And we will now be hearing from Christabel Gough. So, Christabel, I will be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you. Hello, Christabel?
Can you hear me now?
Hello, yes, we could hear you.
Good. Thank you very much. This is Christabel Gough, speaking for the Society for the Architecture of the City. In our understanding, in cases of fire damage, it is the function of the Department of Buildings to determine what demolition is necessary for reasons of safety. Otherwise, this commission has a tradition of reviewing plans involving further demolition in conjunction with plans for future construction or reconstruction on the site. Simply clearing the site without making any future commitment to has not been viewed as particularly good preservation practice. Indeed, it raises questions about the future of the site as a sacred place. We hope and trust that this is not a concern, given that there has been some public discussion of rebuilding. But it is hard to understand the need for immediate demolition if the church is not yet ready to proceed. As you no doubt are too well aware, there has been a long and tragic history of fires in landmark churches in New York. But in many, if not all, cases, they have been reclaimed or, like St. Savva, are waiting for that possibility. Not to retain surviving fragments of the old architecture would be hasty. Even if a modern design is contemplated, a hybrid structure might prove rewarding, whether for a sacred purpose or not. Speculative demolition does not advance the agenda of the Landmark's Law, which is, after all, preservation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Christabel. And we will be now moving on to Jill Benzer. So Jill, I will be promoting you to panelist right now. So if you could please state your name for the public record and unmute your line, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you. Hello, Jill, are you with us? Okay, it appears as though we may have lost Jill. So I will check back in with her and I will be promoting Simeon Bankoff to panelist now. So, Simeon, if you are around, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, I'm I'm here for the next time now. I'm Jill Benzer.
Oh, sorry, Jill. Okay.
Do you want Jill? Do you want me? How would you like to do this, Gregory?
I'll let you go first and then I'll bring Jill back, if that's okay.
Brilliant. Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioner Simeon Bankoff, speaking on behalf of myself. I am not a congregant of Middle Collegiate, but I did pass the building every day for over 25 years while I worked in the neighborhood. This has been a real tragic occurrence. I don't need to say that, and this has been an incredibly affecting hearing. The I understand the 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 meaning that the congregation, that this space has and the importance that the organization has to the community, again, as I was a resident of the community for decades. The building means something too, and while each individual tragedy, each individual fire is different in its own right. Passing by that building every day and passing by that building when after the fire on December 6, 2020, was was heartrending. But even its very appearance, even the remnant of that continued continuity to me, who is not a parishioner and shall never be a parishioner of a Christian church, it added something to it, and that is one of the purposes of our Landmarks Law. I hear that the concerns that are being brought up, I wonder if this is actually appropriate. I don't wish to contradict former Landmarks chairs about this. But in what way is this an appropriate question? It might be a burden. It might be a legitimate burden. It might be a hardship. It might be financially unfeasible, but I don't see how this could possibly be an appropriateness decision. Furthermore, it appears from the presentation that a lot of the concern have to do with code interpretations and property access. And I wonder, is there anything within the ability of the commission or the city to enable a situation where there can be property access figured out so that a better site plan, better site inspections can happen? So much of what is being talked about is rendered impossible because of legal concerns of the property owner, the adjacent property owner, who was, after all, to some responsible for this tragedy. Finally, I just need to say that this is a this will remain a precedent. Any decision here will be looked at in the history of future decisions with regards to commercial, whether religious institutions, and for all attempts and all thought about this to be to be to be considered. We all have different we all have different standards and different things we cherish. And one of the roles of the Landmarks Commission is to be as a guardian of the preservation ethic. And I simply ask the commissioners to deal with this very, very, very difficult situation with the thought that what standard and what social good they're trying to promote. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Simeon. Okay, and now we will be hearing from Jill. Thank you for your patience, Jill. So I'll be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please state your name for the record and unmute your line, you'll have three minutes to speak. Hello, Jill?
Here I am. The computer is slow to rejoin. Okay, thank you. Yes, my name is Jill Benzer. I was I was part of, first came to Middle Church in 1987. And I attend, have been an attendee there for 20 years, almost all the time, and since then, just as a visitor and friend and was very close with some of the elderly members who were at previous congregations years and years before for all their lives. So the church means a great deal to me. I know several people that testified here today. And I'm also very aware of landmarks. And I just want to say what I've been hearing is very, that there is really a great potential here for the church to engage more with the landmark's perspective and benefit a great deal from it. It seems that there are pathways for the church to benefit financially as well as community-wise from engaging very carefully with the landmark's perspective. And it seems that there have been certain critical steps that have not yet been taken. So I strongly encourage the church to do that. And as I think there there could be a great path forward if they do. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jill. Okay, it appears as though there are no further hands raised. So, okay, yes. So I will also just note that we received written testimony from 51 residents. Forty-eight of them recommend approval of this demolition. Three of them have mixed approval stating that the facade needs to be salvaged. Manhattan Community Board III also waived their right to have the church present and request present to them and request that OPC proceed with the public hearing. Further, New York Landmarks Conservancy recommends no action on the demolition and requests further investigation. They also, going forward, encourage the church to honor this lost building and incorporate historic fabric into any structure. And lastly, Friends of the Lower East Side recommend no action on the demolition until an experienced preservation engineer or architect reviews the situation and renders an opinion on salvaging the facade. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And just before we move to further discussion about the substance of this, I do want to ask Mark Silverman to just respond to process, because we've heard some testimony about LPC processes and not reviewing applications for demolition without seeing a proposal for a new building, and that is generally our process. But, Mark, if you could speak to the specific circumstances in this application, that would be great.
Sure. As as you noted, Chair Carroll, that there's been references to a policy about not approving demolition pending approval of a new building, and that is generally the case. It's true for review of non-contributing building demolitions in the Upper East Side and lots of other examples where people are seeking to demolish buildings because they don't contribute in some way or another. And the theory there, as some people have noted, is that having a building, even a non-contributing building on the site is better than than having no building on the site. That that policy has limited application, I believe, in this context where you have a building that everyone acknowledges is highly damaged. It's generally structurally sound, but is continuing to pose safety hazards and and ongoing maintenance issues. There are questions about whether a design for new building can be adequately put together if they don't have access to the site. And in this case, I believe that if the commission determined that it was appropriate to approve demolition, that they would not have to wait to issue that approval until a new building had been approved. And that because it's sort of that prior policy doesn't really apply to this specific set of facts.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then again, before I turn back to the applicant, I just want to address process a little bit more. And I want to thank everyone who participated today. The applicants gave a very thorough presentation, and we heard very compelling comments in the testimony on both sides, and I appreciate the discussion that we had and all of the people who testified perspectives, and I think that will help us moving forward. There's been a lot of information here, and and our engineer has asked some more questions. And and I think that the applicant is going to continue to submit materials in in response to our engineer, and we're going to continue to talk to our engineer. So I think that we won't take an action today, and I just want to put that out there. I want the commissioners to have the opportunity to digest all of the information that we've heard, both from the applicants and as well as our own consulting engineer and from the public, and have the opportunity to visit the site if they want. And so so I did want to let everybody know that's what we're going to do. We won't take an action today, but I do want to turn back to the applicants now and ask if there's anything you would like to respond to today. I know that there were comments in the testimony about what statute this was being considered under and whether appropriate, whether your proposal or your arguments were more about hardship versus appropriateness. And if you wanted to sort of maybe sum up the appropriateness argument, that's fine if you want to do that now or respond to anything else. But as I said, we're going to continue to work together on some of the feasibility questions, and we'll have this back for further discussion at a future, a date in the very near future. But applicant team, is there anything you'd like to add at this point? Oh, Ken, you're muted.
Did that work? You hear me now?
Yes.
Thanks, Chair Carroll. Ken Fisher again, for the record. I'll be brief, but there are a couple of points that I think are important for the commissioners to take away from this hearing. First of all, the as as your counsel pointed out, there's nothing in the statute that requires a new design. And as Chair Tany pointed out, we're stymied at this point because we can't actually figure out what the site conditions are. And there are certainly precedents for situations where non-contributing elements have been removed without a new design. Likewise, the statute does not require a hardship application. And I think your your counsel will confirm that. The certificate of appropriateness is an independent route. And we believe that the standard for that has been met. I don't want anybody to be under the misimpression, by the way, that if we had to file a hardship application, that there would be any question about the about the outcome. What would be in question is the ability of the church to sustain an effort through that. And the reason I say that, just to fill out the record, there's been reference to the $4 million that's been spent. That was out of $21 million of insurance proceeds. That's the sum total of the amount of funds available for this initiative beyond what Dr. Lewis and the church can can raise. And that money doesn't even belong to them. That money and the land belong to the National Corporate Collegiate Church Consistory, the oversight body that has made a tentative decision to allow Middle to develop a plan to build a new church at that location. The Consistory is meeting in the beginning of December to assess the outcome of this hearing. And then in January or February, they will be making a further decision as to whether or not to let this congregation move forward or force them to merge, force them to move, whatever the case may be. But I don't think that 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 anyone would disagree about the extraordinary cost that would take in the event that it was possible to do the kind of extraordinary interventions that might be made. I also want to make the point that the statute does not define the issue before you as to whether or not it's safe to restore or unsafe. the issue before you as to whether or not it's safe to restore or unsafe to restore, whether it's appropriate to restore or not appropriate to restore. And the reason we, uh, place so much emphasis on the safety aspect was because we knew that, that there would be, um, serious consideration of whether or not there was a way to, uh, deconstruct the church so that large elements of it could be, um, uh, reinstilled in a, in a, in a new design. Um, the conclusion we came to was, was that that could not safely be done, or couldn't safely be done without significant interventions that would remove even more of the historic fabric, starting with opening up something in the base to be able to put uh, equipment in, or punching holes in the towers to be able to see whether or not there is risky as they appear to be. Um, someone mentioned a recitation of other fires, but they left out the one precedent. There is precedent for the situation, and that's sixty-four Norfolk Street. You, many of you are painfully aware of it, where without a new design, without a hardship application, the commission ordered the deconstruction of that building, and ultimately, by the way, over the, uh, uh, recommendations of Incora Engineering, and ultimately, a, a tragic event did, did occur. So it's not a question of whether it's safe or not safe, it's a question of whether or not, um, it could be uh, safely deconstructed, which we don't believe to be the case, because as our engineer said, you can't, you can't do more inspection without doing bracing, you can't do more bracing without more inspection. Now, is it possible that we could put a boom on Second Avenue to inspect the front facade? Absolutely. And Mr. Mattson was kind enough to tell us that that would be at a cost of ten thousand dollars a day, plus professional fees. Um, but that doesn't mean that we can get behind. That can't happen unless there's a way to brace. Someone suggested, um, that we should look at whether there's legal remedies that would provide access to the site. Well, the Department of Buildings does not have the ability to order a neighboring property owner to provide access. They can order you to protect the neighbor's property, they cannot order the neighbor, um, to provide the, uh, access. There is a provision in the law, as some of you may know, that would allow us to sue for the purpose of installing protective materials so that we can improve our, uh, uh, our, uh, uh, our property. Um, under the most recent appellate authority, and I'm happy to provide the citation to, uh, to Mark, it's just from February of this year, um, the minimum that would be involved with that, the minimum that would be involved with that would be for us to be paying uh, Ms. Popcorn's legal fees, engineering fees, insurance. Oh, and we would have to pay her for the inconvenience of tying up her property, and which the appellate division said cannot be on an indefinite basis. So even if we were able to get access for the purpose of, um, doing further investigation, uh, in my opinion, having litigated both sides of those cases, there is no chance that a court is going to allow us to have indefinite access to her property, um, if we want to improve ours, particularly if she decides at some point to improve hers. And by the way, as a footnote to that, to that case, the case was brought in two thousand and nineteen, the appellate court issued its guidelines in, um, in February of this year. The litigation is still ongoing with no end in, in sight. Um, lastly, I, I just want to say that, um, we certainly appreciate the, the sincerity of the folks who have, um, expressed their concern, their opposition to, to the application. There's, there's no question about that. I think to some extent, their deep appreciation of the congregation, which they also expressed, makes our case even stronger. Um, we're, we're talking about potentially having to do further invasive work, remove even more of the historic fabric, and then, to what end? Would there be an opportunity to perhaps reinstall some of the, um, historic material in the facade? If that's appropriate, the church knows it has to come back to you with an appropriate design. But to what end would we require them to go through all of these other extensive steps that have been suggested to you today? Instead, I, I, I would urge you to consider appropriateness in this context to mean the purpose of the Landmarks Law when it comes to the designation of historic districts. It's not preservation for the sake of preservation, and, you know, I have some familiarity with this law, as the chair and your counsel will recall, I was the principal author of the demolition by neglect civil penalties provision in nineteen se- ninety-seven. It's not preservation for the sake of preservation. It's preservation for the purpose of adding to the vitality of the city, for honoring our past, but also enliven- enlivening our present. And I think that that's something that everyone agrees that this congregation has done. Now, you don't regulate use, you regulate aesthetics and building forms, but those two things are inextr- inextricably linked in this situation, and that's why the appropriate thing to do would be to grant this application. Now, we would be happy to respond to any of the questions that Mr. Mattson had. We appreciate the thoughtfulness of his, uh, of his comments today. Um, but at the end of the day, no matter what investigation is done, we don't believe that there's any alternative. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so I think, um, I appreciate that response, and I think we do, um, want to, again, digest everything that we've heard um, today, continue to, um, think about the conditions at the site, the appropriateness of, of the retention of, or the, the appropriateness of the removal of, um, the remaining portions of the facade, and, um, and perhaps, uh, some of the commissioners may want to make a site visit. So I, uh, am committed to moving this along quickly. I know that there is some urgency here, uh, but we will do this also methodically and carefully and thoroughly. So we'll take no action today, and we will reconvene as soon as we can. So, um, Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, and Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed. Um, and so we, we're gonna now break for lunch. It's one o'clock, almost. We'll come back at one thirty. We do have one more public meeting item to review, and then we'll move into our public hearing agenda. So, uh, we'll break. One thirty will be the return time, and we'll ask all members of the public to voluntarily exit the meeting at this time, so that if you'd like to rejoin at one thirty, you don't have any technical difficulties doing so. All right, thank you, everybody, for your participation this morning.